Good evening. We were having a little bit of some difficulty while we're running just a minute or two late. We will begin with our pledge. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America.
And to the republic.
Which stands. One nation. For God. Divisible. Pretty unjust as well.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Absent.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Absent.
Councilmember Clancy? Councilmember Tracus? Councilmember Tracus? Thank you. And Councilmember.
Present.
Madam Vice Chair, we have a quorum.
Great. The journal from the meeting of September fifteenth has not yet been finalized. Any bid openings?
No ma'am, we have no bid openings. And Madam Vice Chair, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. Your zoning matters, item number one, second district.
Receive and file county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Thank you. Item number two, fourth district.
See file in the county council. Let's hold this. And that will be the order.
I'm sorry ma'am, can you repeat that?
I'm gonna hold that and that will be the order. Order number, it will be held.
Thank you. Item number three, sixth district.
See file please.
Will be the order.
Madam Chair, did you say so ordered?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I'm sorry, there's some paper moving and it's very hard to hear. We're getting.
Everybody get their phones, please.
Item number four, sixth district.
See file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, please.
So ordered.
Moving on to road and bridge matters, item number one, all districts.
Receive and file. And that will be the order.
Thank you. Moving on to other communications, item number one.
Receive file, the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, saying motion to item number three, and that will be the order.
Item number four, fifth district.
Receive and file, that will be the order.
Thank you. Item number five, sixth district.
Receive and file, county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, please.
So ordered.
Item number six.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number seven, third district.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number eight, seventh district.
See file and refer to the county counselor, the Department of Planning, the Department of Revenue, and the Assessors Office, and the Board of Election Commissioners.
So ordered.
Item number nine, third district.
Receive file and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number ten.
Receive file, the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number eleven, fourth district.
Receive file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number twelve, seventh district.
Receive file, oops, sorry.
Receive file and refer to the county auditor.
So ordered, and I'd like to move back to number two. And go ahead and receive file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Please read the items.
Okay. Under other communications, item number one, sixth district.
Yes, this is a letter I sent to the county executive on Monday, informing him that I was filing. And the Director of Department of Public Health's authority emergency orders in response to the coronavirus pandemic. In this letter, I also urge the county executive to hear the voices of county residents and act in advance of the adoption of this legislation, and drop the orders restricting business operations, public gatherings, and participation in youth sports. This morning, county executive Page took steps in that direction, but there is still more work to be done, and this legislation must go forward. The overwhelming voice of residents in District Six and all over St. Louis County is to permit businesses to fully open, allow people to gather in houses of worship, and permit the unfettered participation in youth sports. As I've always done, as a member of this body, I will seek to listen to the constituents I have in District Six and the rest of the county residents, and push for results-based and effective legislation. With that, Madam Chair, receive file and refer to the county executive. Thank you.
So ordered.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The last motion that you made, could you please clarify that you were referring back to zoning matter number two? Your motion said you wanted to return to item number two. Could you please clarify that that was zoning matter number two?
Zoning matter, I would like to refer back to zoning matter number two, please. Should I repeat? Receive file, the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Item number two.
Receive file and the appropriate transfer be approved as requested. There a second?
Second, Tracus.
Motion carries.
Aye.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, third and seventh districts.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. We will now have the report of the county executive.
Thank you, Rochelle, and good evening, everyone. This pandemic has made us all anxious. The uncertainty of how deeply this novel coronavirus will impact our community has us all a little bit on edge. Concerns of contracting the virus or losing a loved one to the virus. The anxiety of holding on or finding a job. Rebuilding a business that customers will feel safe supporting. These are all constants in our life. And those who work in mental and behavioral health see challenges exacerbated by a world that looks very different than it did six months ago. Isolation, fear, loneliness, they can all send us to spaces that we cannot get out of without help. More than two in five Americans report struggling with mental or behavioral health issues associated with this pandemic, based on findings from the CDC. Upticks in anxiety, depression, increased substance abuse, and suicidal thoughts have been reported as this virus continues to spread without a cure. These stresses associated with COVID-19 disproportionately affect several populations, including frontline workers, caregivers for adults, and those receiving treatment for pre-existing psychiatric conditions. And our Hispanic and Black residents also report elevated mental and behavioral health conditions, seeing their loved ones hit harder by the virus than other races and ethnicities. When we received $173.5 million CARES Act grant from the federal government, I said the funds would be used to help those who needed the most. Part of that response was asking residents in some of our most distressed zip codes to tell us how they would like us to spend $7 million of those funds. In addition to access to healthcare and PPE, they said they wanted access to mental and behavioral health services. Monday, I announced in my media briefing that sixteen organizations have been selected to receive approximately $1.8 million to expand access to mental and behavioral health services. That includes counseling, psychiatric care, substance use disorder treatment, and recovery services with an emphasis on increasing telehealth and mobile service. Staying connected is essential during these challenging times, and I'm pleased the funds are available to help these nonprofits with the critical work they're doing in our communities. That's all for now. Thank you, Rochelle.
Thank you for that report. We will now have reports for special committees.
Madam Vice Chair, we have four reports this evening. The first report is from the Public Improvements Committee meeting held on Monday, September fourteenth, 2020 at 1:00 PM.
Thank you. I move that the report be received, filed, and adopted as submitted, and the petition be approved as amended to provide for a 50-feet setback from right of way of Edward Drive, a 100-feet setback from the north property line, a 45-feet setback from the east property line, and parking setback of 25 from the property line.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Discussion, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. For the record, that hearing was held with the clear understanding, I have communications to confirm it, that constituents from District Six directly impacted by this project would be allowed to appear before and testify before the committee as it was meeting, and to introduce exhibits as appropriate. None of that took place, and the assurances in advance of the meeting that that would be allowed did not in fact happen, or come true. Now, the simple fact of the matter is that even with the improvements, significant water runoff will go from this project directly onto adjoining properties of single-family homeowners adjacent to the project, causing flooding. The presentations that were denied would have established the need for either retaining walls or berms to redirect that water so that those properties were not flooded. Based on that, I'd ask that the motion be withdrawn, that the committee reconvene to hear these constituents before taking any action on this proposal. Short of that, I urge my colleagues to vote no on this motion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair? Yes. Madam Chair, this hearing started back in this hearing was postponed for several months to give the proposals, the opportunity to get the information from the Missouri Metropolitan Sewer District to address the needs of those residents. Those residents were allowed to present in November, which they did do. They were allowed to present, which I'm not sure if that is a protocol, but I thought that was information that this committee should have had. So the opportunity for the community and the members and the neighbors there to present did happen in November, and so there was no indication from either the councilperson that he did support this. Otherwise, we would have probably looked a little differently at that. So it is my recommendation that we either vote this up or down and move on, because this has been on the agenda, the PIC agenda, since November of last year. Thank you.
Madam Chair, in rebuttal, as the councilwoman knows, I had a conflict and was not able to attend that meeting, but there's significant communication from my office to hers and documentation assuring that these residents would be allowed to testify. More importantly, whatever they presented in November had nothing to do with the improvements and changes that MSD did require, and the attendant changes in the landscape that this proposal has changed is going to cause, and the residents were responding to those changes. So whatever took place in November is completely irrelevant to the condition on the ground as submitted now in the revised or amended proposal. So again, I ask that the motion be withdrawn, the matter be rescheduled so that these people can testify. Short of that, I urge my colleagues to vote no on this matter. Thank you.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm having a hearing. Anyone else? I see no one on my screen. I'm not sure what's happening here. So I do believe that the, I do believe that the vote had started. So if we want to move on, however you want to handle that, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Councilwoman Days?
Madam Chair, if that be the case, I suggest we hold the matter.
We will come back to this when Councilwoman Days is back on.
Anything, Madam Chair?
Pardon me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. I can't see anything. There you go.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
We had started the vote, I do believe, before the discussion.
Yes. All in favor? Go ahead, Leah.
I was just gonna say there was a second.
Right. All in favor?
I, are you voting, Madam Chair? If we're voting, I vote aye.
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 What's wrong with the computer?
All appo, any opposed?
Aye.
I hear one nay.
I asked for roll call, Madam Chair.
Sure.
I'm a nay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Days?
Okay, I vote aye, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
I'm going to vote no, because I defer to the district councilperson for their they're the ones that are elected in that area, and they're the ones that have to stand for reelection, so I will support no in this matter.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy? Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion, you have three ayes, three noes, and one absent.
Motion fails. Next item on the agenda?
The second report this evening, it's from the Committee of the Whole, meeting held on Tuesday, September fifteenth, 2020.
See file, and the report dated September fifteenth, 2020, be adopted as submitted. Is there?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Third report is from Committee of the Whole, meeting held on Thursday, September seventeenth, 2020.
The report be held on the order of business. And that will be, that will be the order. Next item on the agenda?
Ma'am, I think, oh, okay, thank you. The fourth report is from the Justice Health and Welfare Committee, a meeting held on Tuesday, September fifteenth, 2020.
The report be held on the order of business. Councilwoman Days, are you online?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I know you wanted a point of personal privilege. Did you want to do that now or later?
Well, yes, we can do that. I thought maybe at the beginning of the meeting, but I did want to make note, Madam Chair, that we have, we have lost a couple of pillars of the community, and I did want to pause for a moment of silence for both of them. The first was William Danforth, who died on the sixteenth, better known as the father of Washington University, who put really Washington University on the map and made it one of the premier institutions of higher learning in the, in the country. He also collaborated with a friend of mine, Frankie Muesse Freeman, on educational issues here in St. Louis. The second person was, of course, Ruth Bader Ginsburg, who was the first Jewish woman, and second woman to serve on the Supreme Court. And she was an absolutely strong voice for separation of church and state, and workers' rights, and gender equality. And I thought it was only appropriate that we pause for a couple of moments of silence for these two pillars of the community.
Madam Chair, I second and concur with Councilwoman Days on the request to pause for a moment of silence for those two individuals.
Very well, we will pause for a moment of silence.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We now move to the public forum. Madam Clerk?
Okay. Yes, Madam Vice Chair, we have 474 written public comments this evening.
Due to the late.
Madam Chair?
Due to the late hour.
May I have a word, please?
Yes, Councilman, just one second, please. Due to the.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, that we started today, and the number of comments that we have. I have two requests. First of all, I've moved that we suspend the rules for the purpose of moving the public forum portion of tonight's agenda to follow item number thirteen. Do I have a second to do that?
Question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
That will be following what?
New business.
Okay.
And my purpose for that, that will, we will know by then what time it is, and we can further discuss how long we should hold our comments today.
Okay, I will second that motion, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, discussion?
Yes.
Thank you. I've come 180 degrees on this question, and I know we have a great deal of comments. I think by moving them to the end of the agenda, it is fundamentally unfair, because there are comments, no doubt, that pertain to legislation that will be acted on as we move through the agenda. And so those comments effectively will not have any impact, because we may well have acted on a good number of concerns without having heard from the residents of the county. Secondly, I think that the best way to approach this is to proceed, hear as many comments as we can tonight. Whatever we don't get through, we recess this meeting, reconvene tomorrow, and pick up where we left off with public comments, and continue to do so however many times recess is necessary until we complete hearing all public comments, and then proceed with the remainder of the agenda. I say this because I think we've heard and seen in the last number of people are engaged. Here they have to say prior to acting on any legislation. So for those reasons, Madam Chair, I move that we proceed with public forum until such time that we have to recess and then reconvene tomorrow and pick up where we left off before we proceed with any further aspects of the agenda. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are you saying that we would not finish the rest of the agenda today?
Well, I don't know how long, I don't know how long the chair or the members wish to hear public comments tonight, but however long we do hear them, I would say whenever that point comes, we should recess at that point to reconvene tomorrow and pick up at that point and continue with public comments, and continue doing so until we've heard all the public comments before we proceed with introduction of bills and the rest of the agenda.
Madam Chair, had you previously made a motion?
Yes, I did.
Before Councilman Tracus's motion?
He doesn't have a motion. He just was making a.
No, I think I did make a motion. Did make a motion that we proceed with the agenda as planned, and that we hear comments for as long as possible, and then recess and reconvene to pick up the comments where we left off.
Madam Chair?
The motion is already on the floor.
There you go. You have to dispense with that one first.
Very well.
So I withdraw the motion to move comments to the end, because we, it may, there may be some things that address our perfection and final passage calendar. However, I do move to evoke Rule nineteen to suspend Rule five for tonight's meetings for the purpose of reasonably timing the reading of public forum comments. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
You only hear one no?
Motion carries.
I move, motion carries, and now move that we limit public forum to one hour today. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Chair?
All in favor? Also, I want to add that the, well, we have to discuss the recess part later. Yes. Councilman Harder?
Finish your motion. You've got an hour on the table. It's go ahead and finish your motion.
I move that the comments be limited to one hour today due to the lateness that we started. It's already eight fifteen. That two hours will take us to ten fifteen, and then we will still have to finish our agenda. So I move that we limit it to one hour today. It was moved as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
No. No.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy? Councilmember Tracus?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, on the motion to limit the public comments to one hour, you have three ayes, three noes, and one absent.
Any other motions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we have citizen comments for the next two hours, like we did last week.
I second.
Discussion, Madam?
Yes.
Thank you. After two hours that we recess at that time from the rest of the meeting and reconvene tomorrow to pick up where we left off with public comments until we finish them and before we proceed with the rest of the agenda.
Okay, we have to finish, we have to follow up with the motion for two hours at this time. In the second, all in favor of two hours?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I would say motion carries.
Will last, will be for two hours today. Any further discussion going, Councilman Trakus? Or would you like to make your motion now?
I think, yeah, I might as well make it now, Madam Chair. I move that at the conclusion of public comments, two hours from now, that we recess and reconvene tomorrow or when the opportunity is and you pick up at that point with the remainder of public comments until we've heard all the comments before we proceed with the remainder of the agenda.
Well, I would like to interject. The reason we had the meeting tonight is because we would not have a quorum if we met tomorrow. We tried to meet on tomorrow, Thursday, and we could not get enough people. So I don't think that would work.
Well, we could then reconvene on Friday if necessary, and Saturday and Sunday if necessary. My point is, I think we need to hear the comments before we proceed with the rest of the agenda.
I understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
Friday didn't work as well because, because again, that's why we met tonight. We tried to meet Thursday and Friday instead of coming back tonight. But on the floor, there's no second.
I, I think there was a second. No, I thought it was, are we, I'm sorry, where are we, Madam Chair? We have a motion from, I believe, Councilman Harder for a two-hour.
We voted on that.
Yes, that passed, but there's no second.
Okay, and so is there another motion?
Correct, from Councilman Trakus, there's a motion, but there's no seconds on the motion video.
All right, thank you, I apologize.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, may I make a motion to ensure that all public comments are included in the public record, even the ones that don't get read into the record tonight?
I will second that motion.
I think we have to, we have to vote on, no, mine wasn't seconded, never mind. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
With comments?
Yes, ma'am, we will continue with the council comments. Again, this evening, we have four hundred and seventy-four council comments.
Madam Vice Chair, beginning with the council comments. The first comment is from Jennifer Spencer. It seems that in regard to her brother, John Clancy, being Sam Page's campaign manager, Lisa Clancy is in violation of St. Louis County Code of Ordinances two oh three point oh three oh, which states in part, "It shall be unlawful for any officer or employee to engage in any profit activity which involves the improper use of information gained through his public position or to use the prerogative of his official position for his personal benefit on or behalf, I'm sorry, or on behalf of any family member or his immediate family." Section two oh three point oh five oh. "It shall be unlawful for any officer or employee to act in any such circumstance, see when any county officer or employee shall have the discretion to act in any manner which may directly benefit any person, business entity, with whom such officer, employee, or member of his immediate family is associated with in a professional way." Number two oh three point one hundred penalties. "Any person or corporation who knowingly violates any provision of sections two oh three point oh five oh of this chapter shall upon conviction be punished by a fine of not more than one thousand dollars or by imprisonment in the county jail for not more than one year or both by such fine and imprisonment." "It seems clear that Lisa Clancy should not only be unable to chair this county council, but she should resign if she has knowingly and willfully violated this ordinance. For those members who are not acting in a conflict of interest, please vote to pass revised bills presented by Councilman Fitch and Councilman Harder today. The county residents have honestly had enough of the dictatorship of Sam Page and the political gains and are losing patience. We will remember your behavior at the pulp. And could someone please take Lisa Clancy's mouse away while the public comments are read? We could also hear on the video of the last council meeting muting the audio periodically during the reading of our public statements when she didn't like what we were saying about her and her brother in the conflict of interest. We could see her move her cursor onto the audio bar and mute sections of our comments. We could also do without the eye-rolling, smirking, and partisan grandstanding by Dunaway and Clancy. Are you councilmembers or are you, excuse me, or middle school mean girls? Sincerely, Jennifer Spencer." From Amanda Heberer, I'm sorry, I hope I pronounced that correctly. "I am writing to ask that the council pass revised bills one seventy-five and one seventy-six, which limits Sam Page and the Health Department's emergency mandates and requires a two-thirds majority vote by the council. It has gone on long enough. There has been zero transparency on Sam Page's behalf. His unlawful power trip is disgraceful at this point. The fact is, we do not have enough data, data to support these mandates. The children could be, in my opinion, are, suffering more by having these in place. They're not taking into account mental health, excuse me, suicide, domestic violence, child abuse, hunger, homelessness, et cetera. These kids need to be in school and, and in activities that keep them active outside around adults that care. Please help the children of St. Louis County be their voice. This was about, if this was about science and health, then why do I have a doctor sending me this? And then the next is in quotes, "All that sweat, jostling, and high levels of exhalation particles, totally fine." I mean, "science is no match for him." And then there's a smiley face, there's a website, and then continuing in quotes, "Yet across, yet across country is perfectly fine. This is political and is putting children lives, lives at risk for all the other reasons I listed above, not because of COVID." Amanda Heber.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, can I interrupt a second? I noticed that, I know Executive Page has left the meeting. Is that noted somewhere in the minutes? And is he coming back?
The clerk will have to answer that question. I don't know if he's coming back or not.
We can make a note of it in the journal. I, I don't know if he'll, if he will return.
Okay, please, yeah, please note that, thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, am I clear to continue?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Continuing from. Yes, ma'am. The following from Deb Michaels. "Sam Page, I am a mother of a ninth grader and seventh grader in the Rockwood School District. We wear masks everywhere. We are doing our part. The negative impact from no in-person school and no sports is huge in my family. The kids are stressed, depressed, and although they can be traditionally straight-A students, their grades are suffering. All of this, when data, experts, and study after study show us kids are at very low risk for getting COVID, very low risk for getting very sick if they get it, and have a very low risk of transmitting it to someone outside of their home, please let families decide what is best for their kids. Let them learn, let them play, let them live. Thank you, Deb Michaels." And please forgive me in advance if I mispronounce this name. The following from Nada Vansaghi. "Please allow the youth in St. Louis County to play sports again ASAP. Our two boys play hockey at a very high level and they wear masks when off the ice and when, and we, the parents, wear masks as well. These kids live for their sports and it's their passion. It keeps them busy and focused away from all the negative things teenagers would normally do if they were born. It also allows them to have dreams that they can focus on to play college sports. The youth is also more mentally and physically healthy when sports are present in their lives. Please allow them to play their passion." From Vanessa Metz. "Thank you for your time and consideration today. Honestly, I never paid attention to the local politics. I naively trusted those in office. That changed when our constitutional liberties were unjustly stripped with no end in sight. As public officials, your constituents expect and deserve transparency from you. The definition of transparency is the state of being free from pretense or deceit and characterized by accessibility of information. It implies openness, communication, and accountability. With that in mind, please answer the following. Can you provide the COVID data by inch? The CDC breaks down school ages, the school age to ages five to seventeen. With eighteen to twenty-nine-year-olds as the comparison group, ages five to seventeen are nine times less likely to be hospitalized and sixteen ti- sixteen times less likely to die. College kids are purposely being included in the youth data to support the deceptive narrative. What are the specific benchmarks to get children back in school and sports? Positivity drops. What is the new data point that will be publicized without the full picture? How many local pediatricians, parents, and students have you met with to understand the benefits of school and sports? Ninety-two top St. Louis pediatricians signed a letter to support children returning to school and sports. Why can't a constituent watch their freshman play golf outside while socially distracted? Walmart, Home Depot, bars, and casinos are open. These decisions follow no logic. Why is Lisa Clancy allowed to vote when her brother is Sam Page's campaign manager? This is a conflict of interest. Why can't Sam Page and his son run cross-country in our county and other nearby counties? All children should be able to play. Can you please define close contact? The Health Department has required that those, required those that never practiced together, never touched, or never came within six feet or more than fifteen minutes to quarantine. Sports-related quarantine numbers are being inflated to suit the numbers narrative. Why does one man have sole control over mandates and care funds? Checks and balances acting for the people are critical, are a critical part of government. There is no transparency and justification. Please pass bills one seventy-five and one seventy-six for the children, for the citizens, and to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America."
Madam Vice Chair, continuing with the comments. Comment is from Karen Smith. "What Sam Page and the county council have done with power and lockdowns is unconstitutional, as proven in Pennsylvania and Wisconsin. It's time to make things right, right now. You have been made aware of the concerns, the questions, and the demands for the reasons behind the decisions. We have no acceptable answers. Spend the federal funds that have been given to help our county recover to actually help us recover. Remove restrictions and get out of the way of suppressing citizens, the ones who elected you." Next comment is from Mike and Tori Bray. "This has gone on too long. Every family has their reasons why the kids need to be back in school and why they should be allowed to play sports. We played baseball all summer long with fifteen-year-olds. We had to play across the river and travel to several different states. Not one person on the team contracted COVID-nineteen. As parents, we should be the ones deciding what is best for our children. My son needs to be back in school. All of the kids need to have things to look forward to and virtual learning five days a week is unacceptable at this point. How will our kids compare academically with all of the private schools that are going in person when it is time for SAT and ACT testing in one or two years? What is the plan to deal with the psychiatric implications that ongoing virtual learning is creating? Stop trying to control things that are not yours to control. Let the kids play sports in St. Louis County and get them back in school five days a week." Next comment is from Scott Vale. "My name is Scott Vale and I appreciate the consideration of the council. I am writing to compel the council to reconsider the decision to have restrictions on youth sports. I appreciate the concern for the well-being of our children, but it feels as though we are not considering that anymore. It seems as though this council is more concerned with politicizing this decision than making the decision that best supports the well-being of our youth. Some council members are even referencing national politics when speaking of this subject, which is not only puzzling but irresponsible. The facts are clear that playing sports is not the main vehicle for transmission of the virus. Instead, they provide a very controlled environment for our children to spend their time in. The controls are in place and they work. In fact, of the very few instances your own data cited, several of them were related to traveling to sporting events. It is ironic that an example of traveling to a sporting event was used as an argument not to not allow sports locally. The people were literally traveling because they were not allowed to participate in the county. Your decision facilitated that travel. Last week, we heard from the Health Department. They cited the risks of myocard- myocarditis? This is certainly something to be concerned about, but the Health Department is very late in their decision to bring this up. Earlier in the week, the Big Ten decided to return to fall sports in large part due to studies and commentary from several well-regarded medical sources that clearly stated myocarditis should not be considered a risk from COVID. Doctors from places like the Mayo Clinic, Harvard, and Ohio State published these opinions. Since then, several college conferences are returning to play and the state of Minnesota reversed course and is allowing fall sports almost immediately. We also know that COVID is spread easily in uncontrolled social environments. We need look no further than recent outbreaks on college campuses. By not allowing high school sports, you are encouraging increased social activity, which is uncontrolled. So by not allowing sports, you are encouraging the spread of this disease. While there is risk in everything we do, it is clear that the benefits of athletics far outweigh the risks from COVID. Stop politicizing our children's lives, let them play." The next comment is from Robin Geiser. "Good morning, I am writing on behalf of my children to express my sentiment on getting our children back to playing sports. I have tried to understand the health concerns regarding the pandemic. However, the facts are not in support of such a drastic measure. Sports not only allows an outlet for my children, it provides discipline and helps in promoting self-esteem, physical health, and increases mental equity." "We know what the risks are and the benefits far outweigh the risks. In the beginning of June, I sent an email to Sam Page expressing my views and explained to him how safe our ice hockey community has been in limiting the spread by adhering to strict guidelines. His staff had sent an email back stating the reasoning for not having competition was due to limiting exposure to aid in getting children back to school. Our kids have now safely returned to school in the private sector and schools have been reporting limited cases. Why is sports still shut down? Please explain how we are able to scrimmage with thirty kids on the ice against club teams within our club but cannot scrimmage with a club within our county. Other municipalities have games right now, which just makes the county clubs travel to other municipalities to play games, therefore increases the likelihood of those municipalities having increased potential for cases. Sam Page has overstepped his authority time and time again. His constituents are speaking out and he has no interest in listening. Please reconsider my request, thank you for your time." Next statement is from Kathy Cave. "Please listen to the people you are supposed to be representing. We want schools." Please listen to the people you are supposed to be representing. We want school back. We want sports back. We want life back. The data shows that zero to nineteen are not dying. Let us make the decisions for our children. Open school back up. Let them play.
Madam Chair, I'll take over while we get her sound figured out. Following comment from Jill Guilfoyle. Please let me tell you about kids with anxiety and depression. Nineteen ti- ti- excuse me, nineteen point two percent of deaths in teens is due to suicide. So take away things like social events, schools, sports, and exercise to help increase depression, isolation, and anxiety. COVID is not killing kids. With the right precautions, we can prevent spread. My son's school has already lost one child to suicide this year. Add seasonal depression plus COVID-induced depression and those who already have depression, and we will get too many letters from the principal that start, end quote. I am sorry to inform you that brief counselors will be on hand, end quote. Other schools are successfully returning full-time. Other schools are successfully playing sports. What is the exit plan? A vaccine? Look at that timeline and past success rates. This virus is going nowhere. Masks work, right? You mandated that everyone wear one, so why aren't we wearing them to go to school? Why are ninety-five Washington University physicians recommending returning to in-person learning? You thought it was a good idea to build an empty morgue. Maybe you should have kept it to put the kids in you are killing with these senseless, not data-driven mandates. Additionally, how is it right that one person has control over a hundred and seventy-four million dollars? I'm in full, full support of Bills 175 and 176. Sincerely, Jill Guilfoyle. I never miss an election. My name is Ben Nelson and I am in eighth grade at Selvage Middle School. I'm on two soccer teams and luckily get to play games. My friends that go to Viani, Lindbergh, Slu, and Smet aren't as lucky as me and they don't get to play games. They only get to practice. I understand that COVID is dangerous and it could be deadly. I don't understand why some of the rules make sense and others don't. I know that my parents and my friends' parents and my coaches, excuse me, are very careful with everything that we do now. We have to wear masks, take temperatures, stay at home, avoid places like Six Flags, even though it's so much fun. I'm going to school every day only on a computer. Isn't that bad for me? But my two little brothers aren't doing well, are not doing well. My mom can't work from home and my dad is super busy at work. So I try to help them when they have problems. It isn't easy and sometimes we get into fights. But I know that I am lucky and that I still get to play on my two soccer teams to get to exercise and have fun. I know that my brothers are also lucky. I don't think it's fair that my friends in high school are punished because of their age or where they live. I understand that you're just trying to keep people safe and healthy. It feels like my family and my soccer team does way better keeping track of everyone's health than when I hear about people going to Six Flags, Flying Spider, or Skyzone. My coach knows all of us and the teams we play have coaches that know all of their players too. If someone gets sick, got sick, I think it would be easy for the coaches to tell the other teams and tell the teams. I think high school coaches would do the same. I know that these new rules shouldn't matter to me that much because I still get to play. But I'm worried that if COVID is still around, it will keep me from playing next year. From Kelly Nelson. Good day, County Council. I hope you're doing fine. I thought that you may appreciate another note that rhymes. The world can be a germy place. We found out this is true. Unfortunately, COVID be- COVID will be around at least a year or two. It's time to move on with our lives, even cautiously so. It is ti- it's time to make our own choices based on the information we know. Since playgrounds are now open and you seem to be rejoicing, it feels like you are ignoring the questions that many of us are voicing. It may sound like we are beating the horse, but things just, excuse me, but things just don't make sense. Sports are optional activities that can be avoided if someone's on the fence. Sports teams have a coach in charge. They want the kids to play. They have already quarantined teams. They take things day by day. There are thousands of athletes competing in the city, county, and beyond. We understand that the virus can cross the rivers and the ponds. But out of all of these athletes, we are hearing of five cases that can be linked to sports teams, but likely other places. It's time for the government to step aside and let the kids play. The risks will be here quite a while, but the benefits will outweigh. Kids have been stuck behind a computer screen for entirely too long. It's time for them to get out and play. To keep them home is wrong. You have the chance once again to make your voices heard. Please stop letting this political game make your vision blur. The following from Carrie McFerrin. Our county high school soccer team stats. Sixty-seven players, eight weeks of training, three cases of COVID, zero cases linked to soccer, zero transmissions to teammates or coaches. Where are your stats, Dr. Page? Hashtag let them play. The following from Stephen Webb. I would first like to thank you for taking the time to read my letters and the letters of other caring and concerned parents. We all appreciate our voices being heard and respect that you have tough choices to make in leading our community through this pandemic. We always have faith that you will make the right decisions and learn from any missteps that occur along the way. In that regard, I ask you today to remove the restrictions in place on youth sports. I do so not because I don't understand the severity of the virus, nor that I just want to haphazardly let everyone out of their house and go back to life as normal. That would be unwise and unsafe. And those supporting this cause are not ignorant. What is safe and smart is allowing kids to play sports and to be in school with appropriate measures like mask wearing in place. It can, it can and is being done in other communities around the country with no major issues or illnesses. So I respectfully ask that once again, you consider removing the restrictions on youth sports. Focus the attention on other aspects as our, other aspects of our society that are the true drivers in spreading the disease. I thank you again for your leadership as an elected official and pray that our community can heal and recover very soon. Roll tide.
Next comment is from Doug Stocktonberg. I am a St. Louis County resident and taxpayer, as well as a parent of two students in the Parkway School District. Specifically, I am writing to express my complete disagreement, first with County Executive Page's attempts to prevent St. Louis County schools from conducting in-person instruction by improperly withholding CARES funding. And second, my complete disagreement with Page's ridiculous executive order that purports to cancel or otherwise severely restrict most fall sports, but conveniently not restrict the sport in which his own son participates. In short, these actions are a gross abuse of power and are not in the best interest of students or their parents who are all suffering emotionally, intellectually, socially, physically, and in many other ways as a result of Page's unconstitutional school and sports lockdowns. The decisions to resume in-person schooling and to have safe sport, sports competitions should be left to the individual school districts and informed parents and Page's actions constitute unnecessary government overreach at its absolute worst, especially in light of the widespread opposition voiced by St. Louis County residents recently. Page is also ignoring the many ped- pediatricians and other medical doctors, including those on his own task force, who overwhelmingly support kids resuming in-person school instruction and safe sports competition. If some parents are concerned about the virus, they are free to keep their own kids out of school and sports. But the government must stop penalizing those students and families who deserve to make those informed choices for themselves. For these reasons, I strongly urge the St. Louis County Council to adopt Bills Number 175 and 176 and/or any other similar measures that come before the council as a vitally necessary check and balance on the unfettered power that Page believes he has over the residents of St. Louis County, none of whom elected him to this position. In closing, please do not forget that the primary duty of the government officials is to represent the will of the people, not ignore it, as King Page is clearly doing. The voters of St. Louis County are watching each of you intently and your actions, or lack thereof, will have substantial consequences at the ballot box on November 3rd, 2020, or whenever your terms on the County Council expire. Next comment is from Sherry Schultz. Please pass Bills 175 and 176 for the well-being of St. Louis youth. The fact that our kids cannot participate in high school sports is cruel and can cause way more damage than any risk of COVID. This is a disgrace to St. Louis County. All ages are allowed to go to malls, eat out, now playgrounds. However, our youth cannot play organized sports in a controlled environment. And our neighboring counties can? How do you explain this to our youth who have worked for years to be the best they can be and now opportunities are being taken away from them without anyone who can provide data to support these actions? Having Sam Page repeatedly, repeatedly say this is the best thing for our youth is unfair. Who is he to decide what is best for my child? Let them play. Time is slipping away from fall sports. Next comment is from Nancy Rorden. Real leaders put the greater good over personal or individual good. This whole pandemic is causing everyone to take an all-or-nothing position. Shut it all down. Open it all up. You are scared. You are selfish. It is never this simple. Somehow, herd immunity has become a toxic phrase, which is strange since it is a scientifically proven phenomenon, just like gravity. Except for the occasional skier, people do not argue for or against gravity. Whatever strategy we use for COVID-19, we will eventually reach herd immunity, either with a vaccine, through natural infections, or a combination of the two. Early in the US epidemic, the urgency of flattening the epidemi- epidemiological curve was emphasized. It was indeed crucial to take steps to ensure that hospitals and healthcare resources not be overwhelmed. But I have been struck by how this emphasis on keeping the numbers down at all costs has not evolved with time. There is a kind of simplistic goal of keeping people from getting infected, period. Now, this may seem like a worthy goal, but with a highly contagious respiratory virus to which most of the world's population is probably still not immune, people are going to get infected. This virus will spread quickly or less so until herd immunity is reached. Instead of a medically oriented approach that focuses on the individual patient and seeks unrealistically to prevent new infections across the board, we need a public health-oriented approach that focuses on the population and seeks to use patterns or epidemiological features of the disease to minimize the number of cases of severe disease and death over the long run as herd immunity builds up. Those are the words of Catherine Yai, a Harvard Medical School biologist, epidemiologist, immunization and vaccine specialist. No matter how you dice the data, the hospitalization and death numbers for certain age groups in St. Louis County do not justify the actions of the County Executive and Health Department. Please use the money from the CARES Act to protect the vulnerable, fragile, and older population and allow the rest of us to live our lives as necessary for the greater good. Get the kids and teens back in school and activities. Structure them and it will reduce the spread, as demonstrated in the last two weeks. Pass Bills 175 and 176 to restore the balance of power given in good faith to Sam Page. The next comment is from Maya Eichelberger. I am a senior at Lutheran High School South. I am the captain of our school's dance team, the Lancerettes. My team would like to thank you for working so hard on trying to make the best decision for the safety of our community. Although I do not believe that canceling our sessions is the most effective way to do so. This season is crucial to the seniors wanting to play sports in college. We all have big plans for the future and how are we supposed to take that first step without a season? Many people are counting on these games to show off their abilities to scouts and recruitment teams. Not having a football season also means that me and my team do not get the opportunity to perform routines that we have been working so hard on for the past couple of months. We have been practicing almost every day since July, trying to prepare for our upcoming season. To think that we all will not get to showcase all of our hard work is extremely disappointing and upsetting. When we heard the news about the sports seasons being postponed, we were all very sad and frustrated. Not only is this hard because of the scouts and the hard work, it is hard for our seniors. If we don't get this season, we also don't get to wear our South jersey one last time or get to perform on the big football field one last time or get hyped for game day one last time. We are already getting so many things taken away from us and getting the ability to play our sport with the people we love is one of the only things that almost felt normal. On behalf of the Lutheran School Lancerettes, we strongly believe that removing these games will do nothing but upset and anger many people and will not improve the overall safety of the community. We understand your intentions and appreciate your effort, but please try to reconsider your decision and let us have a season. Next comment is from Valerie Klow. As the parent of three high school student athletes and one student in the special school district and a county resident, I have had a vested interest in how we respond to COVID. All four of my children are negatively impacted and it is doing great harm to them. My child in special school district is falling further behind every day. How is he ever going to be able to catch up if he can't go back to school in person with the teachers who can help him? This is so hard for him in many ways. His self-confidence is so low right now. He needs help. My high schoolers also need to get back to school and sports. Sam Page only cares about himself and his family. His child is competing in sports that does have high, that does have high contact at the start. He is a disgrace and should resign. His power is going unchecked and the increased arrogance and smugness when questioned about decisions are infuriating. This council failed us by giving one unelected person the power to implement restrictions that impact our livelihoods, our mental, emotional, and physical well-being. It is time to put those checks and balances back into place. Vote yes on 175 and 176. Lisa Clancy is also a disgrace. She has a vested interest in keeping Sam Page in charge as her husband is the manager of his campaign. She is putting money first and hurting the people of St. Louis County. Resign, Lisa. Someone on this council needs to step up for our kids and the citizens of St. Louis County. Vote yes for 175 and 176.
Madam Chair, can you hear me? Oh, oh, wow. I'm surprised. Okay. Continuing with public comments. My name is Marie Norton and I am a taxpayer residing in St. Louis County. I would like to voice my opinion on a few topics. The power and control that is being thrown around is absolutely sickening. Anytime you see this kind of abuse, there is a money trail. I would suggest that all taxpayers listening to this meeting look into public records of where your money is being spent. Noting also who is holding money over certain school districts head to try and keep them in control and regulate them, knowing he can't lawfully. One hundred and seventy-three million dollars was not dispersed to relieve the county in efforts to combat against COVID-19. The same COVID-19 that is supposedly so severe in our community that we all need to wear masks, social distance, close schools, stop youth sports, reduce capacity of business to the point of bankruptcy. stop youth sports, reduce capacity of business to the point of bankruptcy. Listen to that one more time. $173 million was not dispersed to combat our pandemic in over two months of receiving the money. Why, you ask? Control. That is the only reason. Sam Page is only trying to control the community and wants compliance. He is not trying to keep everyone safe. If he was, then he would use that nice federal money in proactive ways, like helping the schools order Plexiglas and supplies to keep our kids safe. Instead, he is holding on to it for his own political gain. The political ring we have in this county is also sickening. I am not a political person, and honestly, I just registered to vote last month for the sole purpose of getting King Page out of St. Louis County. However, the more and more I pay attention to the politics in St. Louis County, the more I believe the IRS whistleblower hotline is really important. The county should not have paid $60,000 to settle a sexual harassment lawsuit for Minion Tracus. I'd be very curious to see the money that is coming into the campaign for Page, and also very curious to see how much extra money the County Health Department and Schmidt's personal bank account has received. The truth will prevail, and the IRS usually figures it out one way or another. Good luck, Minions. To Mark Harder and Tim Fitch, thank you for standing up for what is right and for actually caring about people instead of politics, and that is 400 words. From Kimberly Stevens. Since mid-March, interim County Executive Sam Page has been allowed to unilaterally make decisions that affect every single resident of St. Louis County. We have watched as he has forced our businesses, churches, schools, and youth sports to close all in the name of flattening the curve. Interim Page makes decisions based strictly on his own personal beliefs and interpretation of skewed data. He refuses to listen to his own task force and will not provide data to back up any of his decisions. Interim Page continues to claim that there are many cases tied to youth sports despite being unable to provide contact tracing data. He makes ridiculous claims, such as carpooling being one of the driving factors behind rising numbers in sports. The mental health damage interim Page's mandates are inflicting on our youth will be beyond repair. Our youth need sports and in-person school. It is not interim Page's job to parent our children, not to make difficult decisions to keep them safe, as he repeatedly likes to claim in his staged press conferences. It is absolutely imperative that our interim County Executive no longer be allowed to make unfounded and indefinite executive orders with zero facts or statistical data to back them up. Government only functions properly when there is a system of checks and balances, something interim County Executive Page clearly knows nothing about. Once unelected county official, one unelected county official should not be allowed complete and total control. Our government officials are intended to look out for the best interests of all county residents. It has become obvious to all that interim Page is only interested in doing what serves his personal political agenda. Our children are not to be used as pawns in his political games. It is past time for us to return this village idiot to his village. From Frank Axelrod. It's time to get back in the classroom. The school provides a safe and contact-traceable environment for the children. More structured activities will replace the unstructured attempts at socialization that these kids need and deserve. Please relax the current restrictions to resemble the rest of our state and the majority of our country. And from Elaine Divis. It's official. St. Louis County High School superintendents, with their announcement to play sports outside of the county and the general public, have zero confidence in Sam Page. He refuses to meet with school administrators or the medical task force, or even show up for council meetings. His lack of transparency with the public only leads people to lose and conclude that he is deceiving the public. Principals and superintendents are sending a message that Page is not respected, is abusing his power, and his arguments to keep schools and sports shut down have no merit. Page continues to include 19-year-olds in his reporting of high schooler-positive tests and basing his restrictions and decisions on an age group that is not playing high school sports. New data released by the county shows 15- to 19-year-old positivity rate plummeted over the last two weeks. 92 St. Louis-based pediatricians, the county task force, and even the Democratic media have publicly spoken out against his restrictions and have stated that zero cases have come from high school sporting events. Even Page's own communication has stated they cannot be sure if transmission has occurred from social or athletic activity. Why is Page's son allowed to compete in cross-country and run for miles in a pack of heavy breathers, both in and outside of county, but football players who only come in contact for a few seconds at a time are forbidden to have games? Why can high school football games be played safely in every Missouri county but not St. Louis County? Why are county bars and restaurants and casinos crowded and football fields empty? Why is he forcing businesses to shut down or relocate out of the county? The public is tired of Sam Page's hypocrisy. Page's quest for power is a detriment to any political party. No one voted him into office, and it's clear that he is abusing his power and wants only to control and not to lead. Isn't hiring Democratic Councilwoman Lisa Clancy's brother as a campaign manager a conflict of interest? It's time to end Sam Page's abuse of power and vote in favor of Bills 175 and 176 to keep Page and any future county exec's power in check. From Katie Gibbs. I am writing to ask the council to pass the revised Bills 175 and 176, which limit Sam Page and the Health Department's emergency mandates and requires 2/3 majority vote by the council. We have to start looking at the facts and true data that is out there. The data that Dr. Page is giving us is fitting his agenda and not facts. We are hurting our children, not protecting them. Our children sit at home day after day after day. They are not getting the proper education they deserve or that our tax dollars are paying for. In addition, you have taken away most of their true passion, sports. I have two high school children, a freshman and a sophomore. We see a decline in their attitudes and their personalities. They have nothing to do, no outlet. Idle time is not what our youth needs. They need to be active and involved. I would also hope today that some of the council members could conduct themselves in a much more professional manner than last week. Thank you for your time. And then from Lindsey, oh, excuse me. I'll continue with Lindsey Burns. I'm writing today in support of Bills 175 and 176, limiting Sam Page's ability to make unilateral decisions for the entire St. Louis County without checks and balances by the County Council. Sam Page should not be entitled to make indefinite emergency mandates without a vote. It's a dangerous practice that may have been warranted during the initial COVID crisis, but it's certainly not best practice six months later. We need to restore the checks and balances upon which our government was founded. Please support Bills 175 and 176. Additionally, please lift the mandates prohibiting moderate and high-impact high school sports competitions within St. Louis County. Sam Page's mandate is only forcing school districts to seek athletic opportunities outside of St. Louis County. The Department of Health has publicly stated that they don't support kids traveling between counties to play because it increases the risks of transmission. Yet Sam Page's son competed in a cross-country race in St. Charles with 18 teams, hundreds of runners. The hypocrisy is absolutely ridiculous. Sam Page subscribes to the leadership model of "do as I say, not as I do." If you really want to keep kids from playing outside of the county, the best course of action would be to allow them to play in the county in which they live. Thankfully, my children have an advocate who is willing to look at actual data and make decisions based on real science. Plummeting positivity rates in the 15- to 18-year-old age group, which misleadingly includes college-age young adults. Thanks to Mark Miles of the Rockwood School District for standing up to the current dictator and doing what's best for our kids. Now, it's your turn. From Katie Geary. Please read this letter in full. It does not matter if it is duplicated by others. If we were there in person, each of us would have three minutes to communicate this information, and it would not matter if it was repetitive. Give each citizen their right to be heard. This request is for you to end the county-wide mandate to wear masks, to lift capacity limits, and social distancing orders, and virtual education, restore youth sports, and vote yes on Bills 175 and 176 today. We, as rational, logical adult citizens, can decide for ourselves appropriate actions to take to keep ourselves and our community healthy. This virus has caused the death of 0.07% of people in our county. While each person lost is a tragedy, this number simply does not justify the type of mandates in place. We do not need mandates restricting our freedoms when our hospitals are not overrun and we have flattened the curve, as you originally asked. Lift all mandates today and allow St. Louis County to heal from the hardships the mandates have caused. And from Michelle DeSaville. Sam Page, the numbers don't add up to warrant you closing down youth sports. You let casinos and bars open. Playgrounds are now open, but still no youth sports. You made sure that your senior is playing the sport he loves. You have made him a target for people to bash him, which isn't right. He has no say in your ignorance. You made this personal when you decided your son could run cross-country, but you aren't letting me decide if my child can play youth sports. It's downright dictatorial. I love how you said everyone must sacrifice, but not your kid, huh? It's not your right to decide what is best for my child. It's mine. I would sign a waiver today to decide whether he goes to school and plays sports, but you aren't giving me that choice. Neighboring counties have been in school for four weeks with no issues. Figure out what they are doing and do it. Our kids are suffering. There is no more being respectful to some members of this council. And I'm going to stop here because I have to clear my throat.
I'll take over with my list here. The following from, and again, forgive me if I mispronounce this, Todd Matuchek. I am happy to see recent pics of senior nights on social media at games for parents and players starting to be posted from other counties. I am very sad to see senior night with fall sports is not happening in St. Louis County for families. Think about that. Parents and kids losing that right, games, memory, choice. I personally have invested hundreds of hours in coaching children in soccer from young up, and now they have the chance to showcase their skills as juniors and seniors and show pride for their schools and community. However, it has been cut off by one appointed individual. I restate appointed and not elected. Our government should be made up of those that reflect the desires of their constituents, and from what I see, Dr. Page has defiantly done the opposite. And now, in addition to no faith in him, the community is losing faith in the County Council, who should have oversight. You, the council, have the power to correct this. Dr. Page has beat around the bush with so-called data that doesn't support his position and refuses to meet with St. Louis County in a town hall-type forum/meeting. Please approve Bills 175 and 176 and do what's right for your constituents. Let these kids play. Let these kids showcase their talents for scholarships. Let these families have these memories they deserve. Let families decide. And let me be very clear. I take the pandemic seriously, and so should each family. And if they disagree, then their family can choose not to participate. We are a democracy. Let's start acting like one. Sincerely, Todd Matuchek. The following from Bridget Schmidt. Stats are that 96% to 98% recover worldwide as well as the U.S. I understood the shutdown in March and April. We did not go anywhere at that time because too much was unknown. We even ordered groceries online. I washed all my fruit, including bananas, in warm soapy water and wiped everything down. Now more stats are in. Hospitals should have had enough time to prepare. It's time to start living. For the CDC, heart disease is still the number-one killer. About 655,000 Americans die from heart disease each year. That's one in every four deaths. One person dies every 36 seconds in the United States from cardiovascular disease. Though not contagious, it is still higher than COVID, and many of the contributing factors, such as cigarettes, foods containing hydrogenated oil, et cetera, are still sold. My son is a senior, and it's his last year attending Oakville High School, as well as playing sports. I am pro-school, pro-attending school, and pro-playing sports. I am completely heartbroken for my son losing out on precious moments of his senior year of high school. I choose to live my life based on the 96% to 98% recovery rate. What makes America great is we have the gift of freedom of speech. Please let high school children play, as well as go back to in-school learning. Sincerely, Bridget Schmidt. From Mary Warner. My four children go to three different schools and participate in nine-plus different sports. These activities have actually helped control their stress and physical health, along with the structure of school, jobs, and activities. We have worked with schools, doctors, and coaches for years to ensure they are where they need to be. The lack of human interaction, structure, and activities has taken a terrifying toll on all children, including ours. This, along with the fact that COVID-19 cases and related health problems has dropped so significantly, requires us all to get back to normalcy. You are causing our county to suffer. Excuse me. The overall deteriorating health in children, increase in depression, increase in weight gain, massive increase in being online for school and more, and the terrifying increase in suicides cannot be excluded from the equation. My kids, along with so many others, need to be back in school and back in sports, all full-time. Our children have been able to participate in some partial-to-full in-person school this fall with zero spread of the virus. This is absolutely amazing. Also, there have been practices in camps with zero spread of the virus. These schools and sports organizations have followed guidelines and kept our kids safe. There is no indication that sports or schools are spreading the virus. But quite the opposite, they are keeping our kids busy and safe. Schools and activities are checking for symptoms, wearing masks, in parentheses, when not actually playing, and socially distancing when possible. There has been little to no record of the virus spreading in these situations. So, your orders are likely causing the spread of the virus due to so many resulting in unstructured activities. These orders are harming our children. These orders are also causing a decline in mental and physical condition for all children in the county. This is scaring and must not continue. Please let all children in all sports play games and tournaments immediately, as well as full-time in-person school. There is zero reason to continue to hold our kids or anyone else back from school, sports, and life in general. Individuals and parents should make their own choices. Please, get out of our lives, stay away from our constitutional freedoms, stop hurting St. Louis County. From Rebecca DeMarshall. I'm writing today to respectfully ask you to reconsider your position on allowing our public schoolchildren to return to in-person classes and resume sports competition. This should be implemented immediately. Every day that our children remain isolated in their homes is a day of missed opportunities that can never be recovered. The latest COVID data does not support keeping the children from the classroom or sports field. We have proven over the last several months that these events can safely proceed using proper masking, social distancing, and sanitizing procedures. My high-achieving, motivated, and generally positive kids, 7th and 10th grade in the Webster Grove School District, have experienced frustration, anxiety, and isolation every day of this virtual learning experiment, and it's becoming more pronounced every day. I believe wholeheartedly that this frustration, anxiety, and isolation is potentially much more damaging to their well-being than is the risk of contracting and becoming seriously ill with COVID-19. ill with COVID-19 at school or on the playing field. We must stop living in fear of COVID-19 and consider instead the short and long-term mental health of our children. Thank you. From Amy Eichman. Dr. Garza himself stated, "We don't have enough people signing up to be tested, so that gives us a high positivity rate." This reported rate is not only meaningless without context, it can be downright deceptive. Nevertheless, the positivity rate among teenagers is way down over the last two weeks, and hospitalizations are now also low. Excuse me. You have refused to give a metric for when sports could be opened up, but you have used both of these measures to justify the ban. Give us the benchmarks so we understand your decisions. Your decisions are both punitive and arbitrary without a benchmark. You've stated that 600 children have been quarantined. How many actually contracted COVID-19? Because that is what really matters, not the number quarantined. How many were hospitalized? How many died? What was the age breakdown? Why only give information that is meaningless and yet frightening to those who don't understand? Obviously, we needed to pass Harder and Fitch bills 175 and 176. You could have done it last week. You failed. Those who voted in favor of oversight have my vote of confidence. The rest of you do not. Special note to Ernie Trachis. Chief Fish actually did write the bills with Jen Frank. Honesty is the best policy, especially on Twitter. Just FYI, word gets around. Thank you.
Continuing with a comment from Shelley Powell. I am writing again to voice my support for bills 175 and 176. In these unprecedented times, collaborative oversight is needed to ensure the most appropriate decisions are being made, and the county can be better prepared in the future should something like this pandemic occur again. The county needs to also move forward with allowing schools to play their fall sports in the county. As you know, Rockwood has put a plan in place to give their kids the opportunity to play outside the county. The precautions they're taking could very well be implemented within the county. I commend the council for addressing mental health needs. Has it occurred to the council that getting to the root causes of the mental health needs of our children, the depression, anxiety, isolation, and sedentary lifestyles our kids are being forced to live with, need to be addressed? Bring them back to school and sports with the proper precautions. That will go a long way in supporting their mental health. The council should also promote transparency with the data they're using to make decisions. Don't put out vague statements about a very alarming positivity rate. As you've heard from interviews with parents and comments to this council, the community is educating themselves with the data and what it's actually saying. Examine the appropriate data with balanced metrics and use it to make reasonable decisions about moving our community forward. It's not realistic to expect the virus to go away. The original intent was to flatten the curve and avoid overloading our hospitals and healthcare systems. That has happened. Also, stop including 19-year-olds in the data. 19-year-olds are not in high school. Our kids are at risk for falling behind academically, emotionally, and developmentally. Businesses are closing, and people are going outside the county to shop, eat, and play sports. Quit letting politics and conflicts between councilmembers create division and inequities in our community. The county is better than that. Next comment is from Megan Ennich. As a St. Louis County resident and taxpayer, I fully support bills 175 and 176 to limit the powers of the St. Louis County Executive. What occurred at last Tuesday's council meeting was appalling. After reading two hours of letters from county residents voicing their disapproval of Sam Page's executive powers, came a legal opinion seven minutes before the meeting questioning the validity of 175 and 176. It was obvious that politics won over the voice of St. Louis County residents. I hope today you can do what's right and implement appropriate checks and balances to the St. Louis County Executive's authority. Thank you for your time and consideration. Next comment is from Tom Pauley. As the father of a 14- and 18-year-old students, a county resident, and own a small business owner in Manchester, I have had a vested interest in how we respond to COVID. In the beginning, I was very understanding of the draconian measures taken. We knew very little about this virus. As we have learned more about it, about who it impacts, and how, my patience has dwindled. Imagine this scenario that plays out in homes across the world every day. Sam Page goes unchecked, and the increased arrogance and smugness when questioned about decisions has become nauseating. Sam Page posters that are displayed outside the government center show him with the saying, "Honesty, accountability, and transparency." Sam Page was not elected to this position and runs on these three words for his election? I find that funny, since he has not displayed any one of these traits to people of St. Louis County. One of the great things about how the US government works is we have checks and balances in place throughout every level. However, our council failed us by giving one unelected person the power to implement restrictions that impact our livelihoods, our mental, emotional, and physical well-being. It is time to put those checks and balances back into place. As it relates to youth sports, Dr. Page never provides data that support his position fully, and now that there are numbers that say the 15- to 19-year-old positivity rate has been going down, there is not one word of how or when we will move forward. Parents will not care which political party someone is, for if you're hurting their kids, they will vote them out. This goes for everyone on the council, too. I have never been that political, but this issue has brought many eyes on Sam Page and the council. Good luck in November. Next comment is from Chris Gruy. I am pleading with the council to exercise autonomy, provide a check and balance to Sam Page's tyranny, and please get our kids back to school and back to sports. No doubt this council can assess the widely available data that stands in direct contradiction to Spring Schmidt's commentary recently, just like the Sports Medicine Task Force has indicated. The revelation of Spring Schmidt's data that is supposedly being used to stifle youth sports and in-person schooling was an abomination. It cemented the fact that Sam Page is playing politics and not actually using data to arrive at his decisions around sports and school. Ms. Schmidt's commentary had fatal flaws, and surely this council, or any reasonable person, can see this is all part of a plan, a political plan. Ms. Schmidt's comments further enervated Sam Page's case and screams out for this council to put a stop to it. This council has a chance to act, to be an agent of change and a voice of reason in this developing socialist republic of St. Louis County. Ms. Schmidt's commentary was disturbing, and the lack of any new data suggests an administration flying by the seat of its pants and making decisions heavily affecting the population purely for their own political gain. Surely, a cluster of five cases of roughly 10 individuals would not be sufficient grounds to shut down youth sports. Surely, this council is well aware of the actions of 16- to 17-year-old kids, and to think that sports were the only area of exposure for these youth is not only naive but wrong. Surely, this council knows that the positivity rate for youth means nothing and is not indicative of the true positivity rate, as so many youth now do not get tested, other than extreme circumstances, knowing it will further embolden Sam Page and his power. Surely, this council can see through the scare tactics put forth by Ms. Schmidt around myocarditis in children. That was a step too low and just downright irresponsible. Surely, this council knows that an athlete with COVID-19 can spread the virus just like any other person and won't fall for the politically charged commentary from Ms. Schmidt that the youth playing sports will simply spread it to their parents and grandparents. Stand tall, push aside your political aspirations, and do what your voters desire, those that elected you to power. Next comment is from Elizabeth Laflaine. Please explain to the people of St. Louis County how the latest numbers justify the continued mandates that impact parents, youth, young adults, and teens. Teen positivity rate and metrohospitalization numbers are down, according to the weekly report from Dr. Garza. My daughter, a senior in high school, has been in school and practice for five weeks. Three positive cases have occurred at Nenrick's Hall, and zero cases are traceable to school. But still no games for high school sports. What is the endgame here? How long do you plan on holding teens hostage? Because without sports, they will have more time to socialize, party, and spend more time together, eventually spreading COVID. Stop this insanity. Stop intruding into family life. Parents should make these decisions for youth. Families should discuss and decide how to protect each other, not you. I have never seen so many parents, teens, and other adults lost, anxious, and depressed. It is because their freedom of choice and movement have been overly restricted. And this has to stop. Stop harming teens when the numbers show they aren't harming anyone else. The numbers will never get to zero. Stop tweaking the numbers to justify your actions and scare residents. Yes, there will be positive cases, but when you report them, you need to also share how many have actually been tested. Yes, kids may have to quarantine due to exposure, but how many of those quarantining are testing positive and/or symptomatic? Share the whole picture here, because right now, your transparency is severely lacking. Instead, you are contributing to a state of terror and paying no heed to a collateral damage caused by these ill-advised universal restrictions. The elderly and vulnerable can still be protected, while the youth and young adult population are allowed to still live and be human. Games can and should take place. Precautions are working and can be maintained. But there is no way to avoid positive cases. That is just an unattainable goal. And hanging your hat on the five occurrences you keep referencing does not justify your actions. What you need to be focusing on is the impact these restrictions have on teens and young adults in terms of mental health and financial stress. Sports may help kids get into college, but they also teach and reinforce traits such as leadership, hard work, commitment, and teamwork. You are doing our youth wrong, and it is a shame you cannot see it. Let these kids play.
I'm sorry about that earlier, and especially to Michelle DeSalvo. I will start over with her comments. Sam Page, the numbers don't add up to warrant you closing down youth sports. You let casinos and bars open. Playgrounds are now open, but still no youth sports. You made sure that your senior is playing the sport he loves. You have made him a target for people to bash him, which isn't right. He has no say in your ignorance. You made this personal when you decided your son could run cross-country, but you aren't letting me decide if my child can play youth sports. It's downright dictatorial. I love how you said everyone must sacrifice, but not your kid, huh? It's not your right to decide what is best for my child. It's mine. I would sign a waiver today to decide whether he goes to school and plays sports, but you aren't giving me that choice. Neighboring counties have been in school for four weeks with no issues. Figure out what they are doing and do it. Our kids are suffering. There is no more respectful... There is no more being respectful to some members of this council because you don't respect your constituents. Ernie Trachis, you are a disgrace to this county. We paid you $60,000 sexual harassment lawsuit, which is disgusting. No wonder Sam Page has you jumping when he says "jump." Lisa Clancy, you are so far in Sam Page's pockets, it's disgusting, and you should resign immediately because your brother-in-law is running Page's campaign. Kelly Dunaway, you are a waste of space. I sent you an email, and you never responded. I will tell everyone I know about how awful you are when it's time to be voted back in. I can't believe you listened to all those heartfelt emails for two hours and then just disregarded them. Thank you to the councilpeople who did vote for bill 175 and 176. This week's subbills, 175 and 176, must be passed to limit the power of Sam Page. You have a lot of people that have been learning more about the county council. It doesn't look good for some of you. I was a lifelong Democrat and can't even believe I am saying that. To be politically affiliated with Sam Page, Kelly Dunaway, or Lisa Clancy in any way is embarrassing. You will not get my vote, Mr. Page or Kelly Dunaway, ever. And from Nicole Weston. This letter is a mother's plea. I am begging you with every fiber of my being to allow fall high school sports to start in the county. I have a daughter who suffers with mental health concerns. Her varsity sports team has been a constant and a source of community for her. This team is her family. To make matters worse, her sister is a freshman, and this is the one and only year they will be able to play together. This has been such a trying year, and I pray she gets to finish her high school athletic career doing what she loves. I pray you understand the necessity to get our students back in the classrooms and back in the game. You are losing more students to mental health issues than to COVID. I hope you see the impact your decision is having on an entire generation. I implore you to allow fall sports to play. They can wear masks when they play. They can maintain proper distance on the bench. I want nothing more than to watch my daughters play the sport they love while being safe and respectful of the needs of the community. And from Elizabeth Schwep. I need to ask, what is your endgame? Is it power? Is it money? I have not figured it out yet. There is zero reason for you to keep our children hostage and suppress the youth of this community from obtaining a proper education and playing sports. Children who will not get out of bed, they are depressed. We have children with nothing to do, so they are getting into trouble. Children are falling behind in school due to lack of resources and accessibility to teachers and coaches. This virus is not going away, even with a vaccine. Therefore, we need to learn to live with it. That includes a quick path to return to all school and sports. You keep moving the goalposts without telling us what the goal is. Do not underestimate our intelligence. We see through your games, and this community will not stand for it any longer. You refuse to meet with us, nor communicate with us. You do not stand by us or for us. I request you vote for Councilman Fitch and Harder's bills today. The community is ready. Our children are ready. We are the parents. We will always do what is best for them and protect them. #LetThemLearn, #LetThemPlay. From Debbie Bogar. I respectfully ask that you support the bills that are being introduced to add oversight to the declarations by our county executive and health committees. No single person should have sole authority on decisions with such far-reaching impact. If data supports any such declaration, I would think these parties would actually welcome the oversight and the ability to present a united... Lack of support for this necessary oversight shows a desire to avoid accountability, which is never good for an elected official. Dr. Page, with all due respect, it's not your job to decide what's best for my family. You did your job months ago. You did what you felt was best to protect the county from this virus. Now that we have much more information, it's time for you to step back and let us do our job as parents. We should be able to assess our environment and make decisions for ourselves. Some of us will decide to keep our children home for any number of reasons, and some of us will choose to allow our children to go to school and to compete on a playing field or in a gym. The point is, that should be up to the parents, not our county executive. To quote Lisa Clancy, "Change requires admitting that what we've been doing up to this point isn't working, and that it's time to try something else." This is so true. Let's see the real numbers without 18- and 19-year-old college kids mixed in. Not just cases, but hospitalizations and ventilator usage. We know from surrounding counties that school and sports are successfully operating. Positivity rates are the only metric we should be using to make decisions. This rate fluctuates based on the number of tests given. Asymptomatic people were recently told by the CDC not to get tested. If only symptomatic people get tested, of course, the positivity rate will be higher. Remember, it was 15 days to slow the spread and flatten the curve, so we don't overwhelm our hospitals. This was accomplished a long time ago. Your restrictions are causing irreparable harm to our kids, families, schools, and businesses. Please ease these restrictions and let us all get back to taking care of our own families. From Jennifer Tagatoff. Thank you for igniting my new passion... Thank you for igniting my new passion and turning me and my senior son into being a community organizer and activist. My oldest son, Jack, grabbed a bullhorn last Monday, spoke in front of hundreds of people, commanded your attention to get him back on the field as a senior, and once again, you didn't listen. He was brave, composed, and had a fire in him that proves he wants to. When he was three years old, I would ask him to hold my hand, and he would look at me and sweetly say, "I can hold my own hand, mommy." His leadership last week reassured that I have never let his hand go. I will stop at nothing. We are united, we are a united group and force of parents that will never forget the position you have put our families in. Jack will be 18 before November 3rd. Thank you for bringing awareness to a new kind of voter. Thank you for making me so proud of my son. Thank you for my newfound crew of incredible and loving parents from all over St. Louis County. Back to school, back to sports. No, seriously, thank you. From John Chalice. County Executive Page has consistently defended the continued prohibition on high school sports by alleging a 20% positivity rate among those aged 15 to 19, which he states is significantly higher than other youth age groups. According to recent data released by the county health department, this is demonstrably false. The positivity rate for 15- to 19-year-olds is currently 7.4%, and the county's own health department states that, quote, "As of September 14, positivity rates among St. Louis County youths are similar across age groups." It is time to let high school athletes compete in sports. That is the message that Executive Page would hear if he would bother attending meetings regarding this exact topic with health professionals. Quite simply, there is no data that supports the continued discrimination against high school students. Permitting games to proceed with proper precautions will, one, permit high school athletes the opportunity to earn scholarships; two, avoid further litigation against the county; three, avoid the need for these teams to travel outside the county to compete; and four, restore some faith in the office of the county executive. This continued prohibition is baseless and only underscores the need for legislation by the council, similar to Bills 175 and 176, that rein in the arbitrary and unfounded power of the county executive. And from Elizabeth Cohen. There are so many things I want to say regarding sports and in-person school. I can give you countless examples of how my son has been negatively affected, along with countless other kids. However, I am just a mom who is desperate for her son to have every opportunity to lead a happy and healthy life. I doubt my words mean much to any of you. This crisis has shown parents in St. Louis County just how little you really care about us or our kids. Therefore, I will leave the importance of this issue to those more qualified, namely the American Academy of Pediatrics. You are failing our children. It is time to follow the advice of those more qualified than you. Re-engaging in sports activity, this is a quote, quote, "Re-engaging in sports activity with friends has both physical and psychological health benefits for children and adolescents. Participating in sports allows youth to improve their cardiovascular health, strength, body composition, and overall fitness. Mentally, youth may experience benefits from the increased socialization with friends and coaches, as well as from the return to a more structured routine. These psychological and physical benefits can help support their developmental growth. Exercise also has immune systems, system benefits," the American Academy of Pediatrics. Quote, "Children learn best when physically present in the classroom, but children get much more than academics at school. They also learn social and emotional skills at school, get healthy meals and exercise, mental health support, and other services that cannot be easily replicated online. Schools also play a critical role in addressing racial and social inequity. Our nation's response to COVID-19 has laid bare inequities and consequences for children that must be addressed. This pandemic is especially hard on families who rely on school lunches, have children with disabilities, or lack access to internet or healthcare," end quote, the American Academy of Pediatrics. End quote, "For our country to truly value children, elected leaders must come together to appropriately support schools in safely returning students to the classroom and reopening schools. The importance of in-person learning is well documented, and there is already evidence of the negative impacts on children because of school closures in the spring of 2020," end quote, American Academy of Pediatrics. And from Jen Duffy. Dr. Page, I am writing in response to allowing our kids ages 14 through 19 to compete in sports in St. Louis County. The real facts speak for themselves when you look at the data. Youth sports are not the issue at hand. There has not been a risk in cases in St. Charles or Jefferson County in the past four weeks since they have returned to play. When teams take the necessary precautions and follow the guidelines, there's no reason they should not be allowed to practice as a team and compete. Do not see, do you not see that many kids 16 through 18 have suffered emotionally from the effects of COVID? Sports help not only their physical well-being, but their emotional well-being as well. These kids that you are punishing have worked very hard to become the athletes they are today, and this could have a lifelong effect on them. By not allowing these sports competitions to take place, do you have any idea on how much money the St. Louis County is losing? Do you really want what is best for our county, or are you just too worried about your ego at this point? Do the right thing, and please give the public accurate facts, not your made-up facts that are inaccurate. Please look further into your decision on ending the season for high school sports and make changes where the data shows changes need to happen."
The following from Laura Savas. I'm writing to express my concern regarding the ban that has been placed on high school, high school sports competition. I've sent a couple of letters to Sam Page and to council members, but do not feel the reasons given in the cookie-cutter responses I receive warrant the ban currently in place. The numbers given are confusing and frankly do not seem to add up. I will ask once again why 19-year-olds who are not in high school, who are not high school age are being included in data to determine if high school athletes can play? It just doesn't make sense. I ask that you please reconsider, and for the mental health and well-being of our young athletes, let them play. Thank you. From Kate Hahn. I'm writing in support of Councilman Fitch's bills 175 and 176 that would provide input from all of our elected leaders on major decisions impacting the community and have a checks and balances system in place. One man or woman should not have all the power to make the decisions for the community they represent. For one person to recommend no in-person learning and to mandate no high school sports is insane and beyond ridiculous, especially when that person owns, that person's own family doesn't abide by the rule. As for the supposed data, stop counting 19-year-olds in the supposed data that you, you have used to handicap our high school kids from in-person learning and sports activity. There are not 19-year-olds in high school. By including 19-year-old, by including 19-year-olds in the data which is keeping our high school kids off the courts or fields, you are including every college kid who had just been, who had, excuse me, every college kid who had just had to be tested in July and August before going to college. How can any of this be justified, which communities like St. Charles making it work with kids in-person learning and competing in sports? Now is the time to change the mentality. We closed on everything for many weeks to flatten the curve. That was the goal. It's been accomplished. Now move forward. Listen to your constituents, let them go to school, and let them play. Thank you for your time. From Angela Montgomery. County's policies have increasingly become overreaching and arbitrary with no end game in, no end game plan in sight. National crisis can never be permitted to supersede the commitment to individual liberty and personal well-being that stands as the foundation of the American experiment. It is undemocratic to have emergency mandates imposed on the public by one person, especially one that was appointed and not elected. Policies impacting the county should be decided by a majority rule vote of all the county council members. Our government should be made up of those that reflect the desires of the constituents. When it is not, all faith is lost in the system. Please support Bills 175 and 176 and do what's right for your constituents by adding checks and balances to the county council. From John Manachi, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. Council, I find it unacceptable that our student athletes are not being allowed to compete in St. Louis County while the surrounding counties are and have been allowing youth sports for some time without evidence of increasing the numbers of COVID-19. Sam Page should be particularly singled out for hypocrisy while allowing his son to compete outside of St. Louis County. The negative effects on the mental health of these children is more significant than the politicized pand, excuse me, than the politicized scandemic. My feeling is that you recognize your mistake, but are too dug in at this point to overturn your bad decisions. You can be sure that your actions are being recognized and will be reflected on Election Day. It is not too late to do the right thing. From Kathy and Larry Labarge. I'm a parent in St. Louis County, and we're, we send our son to Viana High School in Kirkwood. We choose to send our children to a private school to help further their education. We are parents who choose to spend a lot of money yearly to get our boys an excellent education and turn them into men of character. Sporting events aid in turning boys into young men and is a great way to build character. My wife and I want to express our extreme dissatisfaction in the handling of fall sports by Sam Page. Our son is a junior and plays football. He also plays the spring sport, so the point that Sam Page says they should move the fall sports to spring is just not a valid option slash recommendation. It doesn't make a lot of sense and is singling, singling them out of the rest of the MSHA schedule. The rest of Missouri will move forward and have state finals without St. Louis County High School. Juniors and seniors will also miss out on scouting for scholarships for college. Sam Page is not reporting accurate facts to support his reasoning for canceling certain sports. Our young men are following the guidelines recommended. No one on the team has had any problems or illnesses since starting practices. I do not see how convenient, I do see how convenient it is that Sam Page's son is able to run cross-country. We also noticed that they do not practice social distancing or wear the required masks, whereas football teams are wearing masks under their helmets at all times during scrimmaging and are additionally wearing shields. Sam Page has taken his power to his head. We understand that he has refused meetings to discuss his findings. We are questioning if Sam Page should have total power to make these decisions, or if there are others that will have the final say. We also wonder why Sam Page's son happens to perform, just happens to perform his sport. They don't follow social distancing nor wear masks. We are pleading, we are pleading to do what is in the best interest of our children and to limit his power and allow our children back into sports. Respectfully, Kathy and Larry Labarge.
Chris, can you come back to me, please, Diane?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. No, that's okay. From Renee Cortez. I would like to give you a dose of reality. Our high school students have been working all summer, not just on the field. They have been bagging groceries, washing cars, and working places like Six Flags and drive-through restaurants. Sam Page has banned high school sports from playing games in St. Louis County. Tens of thousands of county residents have been going outside the county to play games every week since early summer. Now the dis, the largest district is going to play all of their games outside the county. At least three other large districts are developing plans to do the same, as well as most private schools. If we use the logic Sam Page uses that our kids will spread the virus by playing games, then Sam Page's plan is a total failure. All of these schools are going to counties that do not have mask mandates, and there may or may not be limits on spectator attendance, social distancing. It would behoove Page to keep these teams in St. Louis County where the county can maintain control over the management of safety guidelines. Instead of trying to compromise with the schools, Page has forced these schools to find ways to work around his mandates. In doing so, Page and the county have lost total control. Our executive has become a dictator who refuses to compromise or see reason, and you have given him ultimate power. You can take that power back by supporting some bills 175 and 176. There are tens of thousands of high school athletes. Does it really make sense that 99% of an entire generation is similar, similarly, summarily singled out because of 20 cases equating to less than 1% of? It is, is that really how we govern? We take away opportunities for 99% because there is a less than 1% chance they could contract a virus? A virus that has not killed one person under the age of 18 in the whole state? These are kids who will never, ever get this time back again. The schools are looking out for the best interests for the kids. The county should be trying to work with them to make all this happen in the safest way possible. Please be the heroes that our kids and our county deserve by voting yes on subbills 175 and 176. And from Ron Hobbs. I have been a coach for over 30 years. For most kids, their four years of high school is the pinnacle of their competitive sports experience for their entire lives. This is a very important time for them. It's sacred. They won't get this time back. Please consider the current youth sports restrictions. There are soccer players, field hockey players, volleyball players, and other athletes all across St. Louis County practicing every day, just hoping for the opportunity to compete. Many of them are seniors, and this will be their last chance to play. If the restrictions are changed now, there's still time to salvage the season. And from Monica Woodger. As a resident of St. Louis County, I believe that it is important for everyone to be represented and decisions to be made by a group instead of an individual. Please support subbills 175 and 176. It is also time to let all kids of all ages get back to our own fields. Playgrounds are now allowed for younger children, and competition should be allowed for our middle school and high school athletes, as well as performances by cheerleaders, bands, and dance teams. These activities are so necessary, particularly after such a stressful spring and summer. No one believes the virus is gone, but with precautions, we need to get schools open, fields open for competition, and business back on track. And from Joe Schutz. It is time to get kids back in school full-time now. The evidence and AAP support kids in school, especially for the socio-economically disadvantaged students. If bars and liquor stores can be open to patrons at all, with the distinct social harm caused by their use, then education is paramount to those children escaping the cycles of poverty, physical and sexual abuse, drug and alcohol abuse. Hobby Lobby is full of people which the only, of which the only items in the store which are essential are sewing to make clothing. I would guess someone in St. Louis County has a better chance getting struck by lightning than making their own clothing. Do you sew your own clothes? If people can shop for fall and Christmas decor, kids can go to school and play sorts, sports, excuse me. Lululemon has a wait to get in the store, and line was full of high school kids at 1:00 p.m. They can go to the mall, kids should be receiving an education. It is time to allow sports to happen for high schoolers and all kids. The number of cases in St. Louis County has fallen significantly, and it is time to play. Stop the abuse of power now. If healthcare workers, emergency workers, convenience store workers, Walmart employees, business drivers, and other bus drivers, pardon me, and other people can show up, so can teachers. Everyone has tough choices, and when I make decisions about my career and my family, I may have to make hard choices every day. Kids back to in-person learning and, and sports immediately. Parents get to make the choice between sending their child or keeping them home. People can make a free choice to stay home, but with that comes a certain set of consequences. People can make a free choice to stay home, but with that comes a certain set of consequences. Living in fear breeds hopelessness. We know what happens when we make laws which govern liberty and free choice in this country. Look at the history of prohibition. We are living organisms, and we do not get to choose when we die. Live today like tomorrow may never come. And from Wendy Kindbusch. To the county council, please pass Bills 175 and 176, which would limit Sam Page's power. He has abused his power and has gone unchecked during this ridiculous charade of an apocalypse. Trust me, we are watching and will vote you out if you do not take steps to rein him in. This has gone on too long. Our children need to go back to school and play sports. The cure has become worse than the disease, and we're ruining a whole new generation of children.
The following from Chrissy Krusen. I'm writing you today because I would like you to consider revising Bills 175 and 176 in your meeting today. We feel, we strongly feel as if Sam Page has a special interest or something else going on where he is abusing his power with his COVID mandates. These bills should be used for emergencies. There was definitely a time and a place for such restrictions, but we all know what is at stake now, and it has been going on, going on for six months now. It is no longer emergency status. I'm a parent of two boys and I am certain that the St. Louis County restrictions are hurting them to a dangerous degree. As parents, we do not want our children sick, that's for sure, and we would not put them in a dangerous situation without school, but without school and sports activities, I'm certain that they will get themselves in far more dangerous situations. Please be brave and allow us as parents to choose what's right and wrong for our children. Please remember that parents still have the choice not to send their kids to school or allow them to do sports if they think that's best. Online schooling is an option for those who oppose their children going to school or participating in activity. We have lived a very responsible life, and we know what's best for our children. No county executive should have the power to take our choices away. It's not his job to mandate our lives. I do not trust him, and he's hurting our children and abusing his power. Thank you. From Christopher Nelson. If not now, then when? In March 2020, St. Louis County as well as the rest of the world closed for all intents and purposes. We were asked to stay home to flatten the curve. We stayed home because we needed to give the hospitals time to prepare, get proper equipment, establish protocol that would be effective in treating COVID-19. We were never going to eradicate this virus by staying home. Over the past six months, the curve has been flattened. The numbers continue to drop, and we are still under your thumb. Should we really be surprised there are still positive cases of COVID-19? No. This virus was not going to disappear because we stayed home. The guidelines that have been established requiring families, teams, schools to close for 14 days to stop the spread have been adhered to now, but for how much longer? We simply cannot afford to take two weeks off from our jobs, our lives, every time someone has a cough, cold, or flu-like symptom. It's time to reopen the world. We must learn how to live with the coronavirus. The easiest way with the least amount of risk is to start small and allow high school students, who have not had drastically severe cases of COVID-19 requiring hospitalization, the opportunity to play their optional games. Give students in-school bands the chance to play. Give the student body a chance, give the student body a place to go and socialize with their friends. School events, especially those outdoors, can be controlled much easier than what the high school students are doing now. Kansas City schools have done this effectively with the ticket system for spectators. Store-bought goods individually wrapped from a concession stand. It's time. Trying to cement your feet into quicksand. Stop trying to cement your feet into quicksand. We cannot afford to keep living this way, and it's time that our voices are heard. From Heather Nolting. As a lifelong resident of St. Louis County, I am deeply troubled by the continued mandates to county voters and their dependence under the authority of emergency powers. Our system of government is not designed to allow unlimited power, which has no time limit, in the name to perceive what, in the name of perceived welfare regardless of what the emergency may be. Do you all understand that without limits to executive authority, abuses that you all may not agree with may unfold in the future? Limited executive authority and limits on emergency powers do not apply to Sam Page's current mandates. I would ask all of you to please vote yes on substitute Bills 175 and 176. It is time to limit executive authority and the government overreach into the lives of your constituents now and in the future. Additionally, I would ask that all mandates be lifted immediately. It is time for individuals to have the choice whether they feel a mask is necessary for them personally. It is time for parents to decide where and how their children should be educated and how their children should participate in athletics, music, and the arts for their own families. It is time for businesses, churches, and schools to be allowed to reopen without restrictions. It is time for the Department of Health to get out of my private business. It is time for this council to meet in person so that we, the people, can voice our opinions in person about how this council and Sam Page's mandates are impacting our lives and the lives of our children. Thank you for your time. From Keith Hinton. I'm a parent of two daughters that both attend high school, participate in high school sports, and normally play club volleyball in St. Louis County. I'm also a coach that coaches in St. Louis County. My oldest is a senior and has been prohibited from playing games by Sam Page's orders. I'm sure by now you've seen the data, the reports from medical professionals, that show very low possibility of transmission through youth sports, especially while action precautions are being followed. I also have issue with the inclusion of 19-year-olds as high schoolers. High school is generally 14 to 18 years of age. I'm asking you to please do what you can to not allow these prohibitions to continue. I ask that you put aside your own personal agendas and stop punishing our children. Current data shows that this is not about your broken record. We're protecting our children. Answer to any question that is asked. The recent cases you mentioned and jumped right on, as well as past cases, were found to be contracted outside of sports at parties or extracurricular activities. I'm asking that you vote for revised Bills 175 and 176, one of which would allow you taking back control of these decisions, so that one person doesn't have ultimate power to make important decisions. I would ask that you support these so that the children that need youth sports can go back to what they love. In my experience from coaching, sports, some of these kids is the best part of their life. So I hate to see the only great part of their life be stripped from them, especially when the data and an overwhelming number of medical professionals are showing that they should be playing. Thanks. From Dr. Patricia Parker. It is unfortunate that Sam Page does not act as he spoke. This is in quotes. I want to assure everyone in St. Louis County from the very beginning that we will have absolutely no tolerance for pay-to-play politics, Page said. Continuing quotations, no tolerance. We strive to set a new standard for ethical government, and we will be open and transparent so that you can hold us accountable, end quote. A historic day. He appears to be unable and unwilling to admit he is wrong. His data was and is inaccurate. He isn't able to listen to pediatricians across the country that say our children need to be in school and playing sports. So, so disappointed that such a man is in office. Sincerely, Dr. Patricia Parker.
Continuing with a comment from Tatiana Kosik. As a former citizen of communist authoritarian country, I am increasingly alarmed by the familiar patterns of governmental overreach bordering with tyranny, rules that apply to some but not others, orders that are confusing at best and contradicting at worst, bureaucracy and corruption at the highest levels. I was extremely lucky to escape my former country of Turkmenistan, communist USSR republic turned authoritarian, and moved to the United States in 2001. I passionately appreciate the rights we enjoy here because I grew up in a country with numerous perpetual human rights violations. As an American citizen, I am very alarmed to see those rights are being taken away from us with lightning speed. We cannot allow ourselves to blindly obey to orders that make no sense and have conflicting and questionable data. It creates a bad precedent. Just look at the past. I copied the text below from one of my groups as I concur with the message. This request is for you to end the county-wide mandate to wear masks, to lift capacity limits, end social distancing orders, end virtual education, restore youth sports, and vote yes on Bills 175 and 176 today. We as rational, logical adult citizens can decide for ourselves appropriate actions to take to keep ourselves and our community healthy. This virus has caused the death of 0.07% of people in our county. While each person lost is a tragedy, this number simply does not justify the type of mandates in place. We do not need mandates restricting our freedoms when our hospitals are not overrun, and we have flattened the curve as you originally asked. Lift all mandates today and allow St. Louis County to heal from the hardships the mandates have caused. Thank you for your time and consideration. Next comment is from Kathy Coyle. SSM, BJC, Mercy, St. Luke's Sports Task Force recommended weeks ago to the St. Louis municipalities that sports could go to Phase 3. Why is Sam Page not following the recommendations of the task force? He followed the commission's advice every other time they made a recommendation. I am extremely concerned about our county executive acting like a dictator and shutting down sports when St. Charles, Jefferson County, and other surrounding counties did not. Other areas have had spikes of the virus, and they did not limit competitive games between teams. I have never seen a politician as drunk on power as Sam Page. Let our kids play. Parents are smart enough to decide if they want their family to play. We don't need the government. The virus won't be an issue after November 3rd. You have not fooled me. Next comment is from Maureen Dressing. Dear Sam Page, how dare you decide what is best for my daughter? She is a senior at St. Joseph Academy, and you are taking away her senior year as a volleyball player. These are live-long memories she will never get back. As a medical professional, I can tell you what you are doing to these kids mentally is way worse than COVID. They need to get out, release energy, not stare at a screen all day. You need to take 19-year-olds out of your statistics and really look at the data. These kids are not the problem. Hashtag back to school, hashtag back to sports. Next comment is from Stephanie Kingston. Please look deep into your hearts and honestly tell us that the youth of the county don't matter. By not allowing youth sports, you are telling our county's future that they don't matter. We, as adults, can go to casinos, bars, stores, work, and freely hang out with people of our choosing. Children are not allowed sports, school, or activities. We are damaging our children in so many ways, including but not limited to causing lifelong mental health problems. Anxiety and depression don't just disappear. These are issues that our children may be dealing with for life. Obesity, weight gain, and lack of self-confidence. Children have been asked to sit at home and do nothing for half a year now. With childhood obesity already a problem, why would we want to force it to be worse? Loss of opportunity. Sports are sometimes the only outlet that a child has. This is their opportunity to shine and potentially help them later in life in ways of scholarships. All sports at all ages should be opened up to practice, scrimmage, and competitions. All children should be allowed to have their parents watch them compete. We are dealing with much greater issues than COVID right now. Mental health, physical health, and life opportunities are things that will affect their entire life. Stand up and let the youth of the county know that you do care about them, because right now they sure don't feel as though they matter. Next comment from Kelly McGee. Please consider passing the revised Bill 175 and 176 and require a 2/3s majority to pass emergency mandates. St. Louis County is suffering and suffocating under the current mandates. I have lived in St. Louis County since 1979, but I am seriously considering moving across the river to St. Charles to get away from the restrictive regulations. Dr. Page has too much power, and the people are tired of it. Please vote in the revised 175 and 176 for the good of the people of St. Louis County. And from Amber Mueller. I am a resident of St. Louis County, taxpayer, and parent of three school-aged children. I am writing to urge the council to vote yes on Bills 175 and 176. Please stop the madness of Sam Page ruling everyone's lives according to his own skewed data and political games. It is one person in charge of and hurting the lives of so many people within the county. We have witnessed how Page alone is withholding CARES funding in an attempt to prevent St. Louis County schools from holding in-person school. His executive order to cancel or restrict fall sports is unnecessary and based off of data that includes 19-year-olds, which omits 99% of high school-aged children, also without benchmark data to share with residents. Also, now in a disagreement with his medical experts, who he claims to consult with, all while his own son is able to play sports. See the hypocrisy? The decisions for sports and school, the decisions for school and sports returns should be made by parents and school district leaders. Page's actions are an abuse of power and detrimental to children in numerous ways. With a leader receiving such widespread opposition from St. Louis County residents, it is imperative the council vote yes today so as to rebalance power and decisions for the county. The voters of St. Louis County are watching each of you intently, and your actions or lack thereof will have substantial consequences at the ballot box both on November 3rd, 2020, and/or on individual term expirations. And from Debbie Crowley. I would like to take a minute to express my feelings towards the mandates you have put in place regarding youth sports for high school ages 15 to 19. I appreciate that you feel the need to protect our children, but I believe the parents should be the ones to determine that. You are taking that right away from us. The sports should be allowed to play, and those parents that don't feel comfortable don't have to play, but the rest should be able to do so and have the right to make that decision. You have provided no evidence or data to back up your decision, and I have been in touch with several of our doctors that are for the children playing. We live in Jefferson County, but attend private school in St. Louis County. It is frustrating to see all the schools be able to play around us, and she is not allowed. St. Louis County is the only county in the entire state that is not playing. How does that make any sense? I am tired of you using our children as pawns in this political game that you are playing. High school is only four years, and you are taking away that time from the kids and them making memories. Get off your high horse and stop thinking you know what is best for our kids. The data does not back up your decision, and you are being a dictator. From Julie Bernstein. Dear St. Louis County Council, Tim Fitch, Mark Harder, and Ernie Trakis, you have to stop the utter madness of this communism/fascism nonsense of King Page's raid of terror. I almost got arrested today over these silly mandates and guidelines for not putting on a mask when I have to breathe. All I wanted to do was buy a soda at the Q Trip in peace. I hope you are happy, Sam Page, because the police had one handcuff on my wrist before giving me the option to go if I would leave the store and not come back. Congratulations, King Page. You attempted to condemn an innocent person for simply breathing. Thanks to you, I could have ended up with a record on file that would make me look like someone with a felony charge with that of convenience store thief. Thanks to you, Sam Page, I have health issues, mental anguish from harassment, threat of arrest, and criminal charges. I hope you are now happy. Sam Page, you enjoy being a dictator, forcing business to refuse to serve us if we don't have one of your bloody muzzles on. You must- You must enjoy being such a sadist to other people's pain and suffering. Because of what you're doing, people who can't wear the mask for whatever reason cannot buy extensions such as medicine, food, and drink. This is making our everyday lives a living hell and almost impassable while, why you attack our God-given rights. We are a republic and not a kingship. This is we the people by the people. Sam Page, you have stepped out of bounds with your power while getting innocent people in trouble. I don't know how you can sleep with yourself at night over this. You, Sam Page, are an utter bully and you need God in your heart and you don't have it. God have mercy on your soul. You are an unfit county executive who should step down effective immediately because you failed to represent and protect the freedom and liberties of the people of this county. Please vote for Bill 175 and 176 to make sure that no one person can wield the power of the king of staff. We live under a republic, not a kingship. You also need to lift all the restrictions and mask mandates. From Nicole Harms. Last year, Sam Page told us, quote, "I want to assure everyone in St. Louis County from the very beginning that we will have absolutely no tolerance for pay-to-play politics. No tolerance. We strive to set a new standard for ethical government and we will be open and transparent so you can hold us accountable," end quote. We are holding you to that promise because we certainly have not seen that to date. This is clearly no longer about schools or kids or sports because for some reason you are holding hostage the one age group that has the least potential for negative consequences from COVID. Instead, this is all about power and pay-to-play politics and it sickens me. Honestly, I didn't pay much attention to local politics because naively I thought they would act honorably and do what is right for the people of the county. I have learned more than I ever wanted to know in the last couple of weeks and am disgusted. Not once has anyone of you, besides Tim Fitch and Mark Harder, offered to speak to us, listen to our concerns, and make us feel heard. Instead, you continue to shove your agenda down our throats. This is wrong. No one person should have this much power without oversight. Please vote for the revised Bills 175 and 176. Ernie Trachis, I'm talking to you especially, and get the kids back to school and back to sports. And from April Wilhelm. When a government official fails to act in the best interest of those they serve, they need to be held accountable. Currently, our county executive is not held accountable. The county council has given up their duty and responsibility for oversight of county governance. As elected representatives, I urge you to vote yes on Bill 175 and Bill 176 to restore a system of checks and balances. I would also expect that Council Chair Clancy abstaining from voting as there is a clear conflict of interest for her. Shutting down our economy, choosing what businesses are allowed to operate, dictating what events and gatherings can occur, keeping our children out of parks, mandating healthy individuals wear masks, and shutting down youth sports are not restrictions that one individual should have the authority to make for almost 1 million people. It has become clear in recent weeks that Dr. Page is no longer acting in good faith for the people of St. Louis County. He refuses to meet with constituents, has failed to provide any data to support his restrictions, continually sidesteps any questions concerning the shutdown of youth sports, and has zero transparency in his statements and press briefings. St. Louis County does not need to be the next Nashville. The county council needs to hold Sam Page accountable for what he has done and end the power of one unelected person to implement restrictions that impact our constitutional rights and freedoms. When elections are held, the council will be held accountable for their actions as well.
From Aaron Boyle. Please support Bills 175 and 176. I'm the parent of two high school-aged daughters. Both my girls play softball and my oldest, a senior, also plays soccer. Playgrounds are now open, bars, restaurants, casinos, and amusement parks are open. Why are most youth sports still banned? Sports can be played in a responsible format. Practices have been going on, been going for weeks with no reported COVID exposure traced to sports. My daughter played club softball from March through July in St. Charles County. Not a single case of COVID transmission through softball was reported. Worried about parents not being responsible? Fine, fans, spectators. I would be heartbroken to miss my daughter's senior, pardon me, miss my daughter's senior season, but it's more important that she be allowed to play than I be allowed to watch. I'm thrilled that the ban was lifted for some sports. Now please lift the ban for all sports. All the kids need sports, their mental health is suffering. My senior deserves her last season. We understood the decision to cancel spring sports and we supported that decision. But now with more knowledge about how the virus spreads and the amount of time you need to be in close contact with someone to pass it, it doesn't seem sensible to ban youth sports. Over 90 local physicians agree that youth sports and competitions should move forward. Please let us as parents decide if our kids can play. Watching fall sports to springtime, I'm sorry, switching fall sports to springtime is not a viable solution. Many athletes play multiple sports. It's not fair to ask them to choose which sports to play in the spring. Many athletes also compete in club sports, which play in the offseason from the high school sport. These kids are watching. Many of the seniors will be 18 and able to vote. Mine will be 18 before November, before the November election. She's paying attention. They and their parents will remember your decision. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, that is two hours of public comment.
We will move to introduction of bills.
Bill number 215, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray for Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept the grant of up to $10,000 from the Office of State Courts Administrator, appropriating the same for support of the domestic violence court-based victim advocacy project, and authorizing the Director of Operations of the Family Court to execute necessary documents. Bill number 216, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray for Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $44,757.81 from the Office of State Courts Administrator, appropriating the same for support of the Family Court's drug court, and authorizing the Director of Operations of the Family Court to execute necessary documents. Bill number 217, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray for Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $25,000 from the Missouri Department of Higher Education and Workforce Development, appropriating the same for support of a local equal opportunity officer, and authorizing the Director of the Department of Human Services to execute necessary contracts or other documents. Bill number 218, introduced by Councilmembers Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Walton Gray for Clancy, Trachis, and Harder, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the Missouri Department of Conservation for the cooperative management of 12 lakes located within county parks. Bill number 219, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance amending ordinance number 27,796 by enacting a new Section 3 authorizing the county executive to issue a temporary construction easement to the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District MSD in connection with MSD's Jefferson Barracks Tunnel MSD Project Number 1171-015.1 within Jefferson Barracks Park. Bill number 220, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 703, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974, as amended, St. Louis County Emergency Management Code by repealing and reenacting Section 703.070 pertaining to duties of the county executive during a state of emergency and state of emergency declarations due to a pandemic. Bill number 221, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter 600, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974, as amended, Department of Public Health by repealing and reenacting Section 600.030 pertaining to the duties of the Director and Public Health Orders issued by the Director related to a pandemic. Bill number 222, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder, an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter 600, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974, as amended, Department of Public Health by repealing and reenacting Section 600.030 pertaining to the duties of the Director and Public Health Orders issued by the Director related to a pandemic. Bill number 223, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder, an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 703, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974, as amended, St. Louis County Emergency Management Code by repealing and reenacting Section 703.070 pertaining to duties of the county executive during a state of emergency and state of emergency declarations due to a pandemic. Madam Vice Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. We will go to perfection of bills.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Please hold Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 175, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
We've heard much about Bill 175 and 176 this evening from members of the public. If you remember last week, substitute Bill 1 for 175 and substitute Bill 1 for 176 both failed in the council, so those replacement bills are now going to be titled Bill 222 and Bill 223 that we just heard for introduction. So discussion about those two new bills will be taken up next weekend and hopefully the first vote. So for this evening on Bill 175, I'll move to hold Bill 175.
Bill 175 is held.
Bill number 176, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
And for the same reason I just described in 175, I move to hold Bill 176.
Bill 176 is held.
Bill number 198, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to adopt substitute Bill 1 for Bill number 198.
Madam Vice Chair, I think you mean to say you moved to perfect it.
I have a subbill.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair, you would need to move to adopt the subbill.
Yes, madam. Madam Vice Chair, we do have a substitute bill. I can read the substitute bill for you?
Yes.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 198, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, an ordinance amending Chapter 107, Title 1, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974, as amended, purchasing by repealing and reenacting Section 107.401 pertaining to application of cone of silence.
I move to adopt substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 98. Is there a second?
Second, Days.
Please read the bill for perfection. Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose. The motion passes. Read the bill for perfection.
And Madam Chair, I'm sorry, that was for Bill 198, substitute 1 for Bill 198.
Yes, ma'am.
We proceed, Gina.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Please read the bill for perfection.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 198, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for the perfection of substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 198. May I have a second?
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose. Substitute Bill number 1 for 198 passes for perfection. I move to, pardon me.
Did you want me to move on to Bill 209?
Gina, we're gonna try to put, final passage today for essence of the timeline that's needed.
Chair, I believe you told me that you wanted to move to suspend the rules in order to be able to take up the bill for final passage. I believe that's what you told me.
We don't have seven members to advance.
Did you want me to explain what the change was?
We need seven members present to do that.
That is another rule that would require seven members.
I'm sorry, I did not understand that. Madam Chair, may I ask a question here?
Sure.
What was Genevieve's comment about the seven members?
That Councilman Trachis is correct, there is a rule that would require that, but the council also has the ability by Rule 19 within its operating, within its rules to move and take up a motion to suspend rules. So if the council chooses that rule that requires seven numbers to agree could be suspended.
So it's a simple majority to suspend the rules.
Yes, and that is available to you because this original bill was on the agenda for 14 days, which is the charter requirement.
I see, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair, for that clarification.
Is it the pleasure of the council to suspend the rules to take a substitute Bill number 1 for 198 on final passage today?
Is that your motion, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Well, right now I'm asking if there's any opposition to that before I make a motion. Seeing that we suspend the rules to allow the council to take a substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 198 on final passage order of business.
I will second that motion.
I move for final passage of substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 198.
I think we have to, you need to take a vote on the motion to suspend.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. I move for final passage of substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 198.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Roll call.
I think it's a roll call.
That is correct.
Oh, yeah, final passage.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, on Bill, on substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 198, there are six ayes and one absent. Madam Vice Chair, on Bill, on substitute bill number one for Bill number one ninety-eight, there are six ayes and one absent.
Motion, final passage of Bill number, substitute one for Bill number one ninety-eight passes. Moving on with the, uh, perfection calendar.
Bill number two oh nine introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number two oh nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two oh nine is perfected.
Bill number two ten introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number two ten.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two ten is perfected. I was a little hesitant, Jean, um, certainly to an administrator, need to, administrator need to announce that I'm, um, introducing the bill for Clancy. I think that was mentioned last week when Harder, when Councilman Harder was not here.
I was here.
I don't want it to come back later.
I'm, I'm, which bill are you referring to?
I don't know.
The bills that were initially introduced by Clancy should, would be stated that I am introducing those for her. I think that came up at one of the meeting when Councilman Harder was not here.
The, the bills that you introduced this evening and the administrative director could confirm for us, I believe that bills that shape, that would have come in under Councilwoman Clancy's name did in fact come in under your name for her.
That is correct.
I, I believe, Madam Chair, that you are referring to the perfection of the bills in that, uh, Councilwoman Clancy's name is there. However, you are doing that in her absence. I believe that was the question.
Uh, okay, if that's the question, yeah, she remains the sponsor of the bill. You are making of the motion on, on the bill though.
Right, but I.
So the, we don't have to change who the sponsor of the bill is in order for you to make a motion relating to the bill?
I know that, but I believe last that Beth indicated that it should have been stated Councilwoman Walton Gray for Councilwoman Clancy. But that's, we'll just move on. I don't want to be, be labored the, uh, the information. We can move on, um.
Okay. Yes, okay. Bill number two eleven introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number two eleven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two eleven is perfected.
Bill number two twelve introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Walton Gray.
I move to perfect Bill number two twelve.
Second, Harder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two twelve is perfected.
Bill number two thirteen introduced by Councilmembers Days, Fitch and Harder.
Madam Chair, to speak on the bill?
Go ahead.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Uh, in March of this year, we were met with, uh, an unprecedented pandemic. Uh, the likes that we have never seen before. It is, uh, was left up to us scrambling about what to do and how to do it. We will handle a lot of money, one point seven three million dollars to be exact, to address the urgent needs associated, um, with this virus. We were told that this money had to be distributed quickly so that our constituents would not suffer unnecessarily and begin the support needed to weather this storm. We were told that time was of the essence and we needed to move post haste to get this done. And in good faith, I made that vote. We are now in the latter part of September and we have only spent approximately forty-four percent of that money. The small businesses in my district have gone out of business waiting on the Small Business Relief Program. I get calls and emails daily asking what happened and I can't answer those questions, so I send them to the team. Uh, we do not ti- have time for the council oversight. That's what we were told on spending this because it would take too much time. It would be too onerous. Uh, we would get caught in the, uh, bureaucracy of having, of how to allocate this money. We are again in the latter part of September and only approximately, I repeat, approximately forty-four percent of this money has been spent. The Oversight Committee has worked diligently trying to meet the challenges of getting this money out. Uh, we have been presented with folks not showing and not having enough information to make some of these decisions. But our goal was to expedite that and to eliminate some of the bureaucracy and, uh, red tape that went with that process. So this legislation was designed to add more eyes to this, to make ideas and suggestions as to how to spend the rest of this money before December thirty-first because it has to be returned unless something happens by December thirty-first. So this is where we are, Madam Chair. I am still working on this because I'm trying to work with legal to see how we can effectuate the kind of change that we are looking for. So with that, Madam Chair, I will move to hold the Bill two thirteen at this particular point. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill number two thirteen is held.
Bill number two fourteen introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to perfect Bill number two fourteen.
Second, Harder.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Bill two fourteen is perfected. We will now move to final passage.
Bill number three twenty introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill number three twenty. Bill number three twenty is held.
Substitute bill number two for Bill number three eighty-five introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
So this is, uh, a bicycle bill that, uh, I've been working on since before I even, I, before I even walked in the door here. And, and I think more than ever, we are seeing that we need to make our streets safer to people who can't afford or don't have a license, but people who can't or don't have a car and who don't want to rely on our public transportation or can't because it's inconvenient. Um, and to that end, I do want to pick this back up. Um, so even though I'm gonna hold substitute bill number two for Bill number three eighty-five tonight, I am formally requesting a committee of the whole. Councilman Tracus has agreed to work with me to figure out who should be invited to that meeting to uh, speak and, and to be questioned by us on the current legislation. Um, so let's give it at least a few weeks, maybe a month out so that we have time to get together the people that we would like to be there. Um, but I would really like to get this going again. So for tonight, please.
Bill number substitute bill number two for Bill number three eighty-five is held.
Bill number fourteen introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy and Harder.
Move to hold Bill number fourteen, please.
Bill number fourteen is held.
Bill number seventy-six introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
Please hold Bill number seventy-six.
Bill number seventy-six is held.
Bill number two oh two introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold, and Bill number two oh two is held.
Bill number two oh five introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number twenty, two oh five.
Second, Days.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Bill number two oh five is finally passed.
Pardon, excuse me.
Do I, do I get a vote?
You're frozen.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, on Bill number two oh five, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number two oh five is finally passed.
Bill number two oh six introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number two oh six. Is there a second?
Second, Days.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, on Bill number two oh six, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number two oh six is finally passed.
Bill number two oh seven introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number two oh seven.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, on Bill number two oh seven, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number two oh seven is finally passed.
Bill number two oh eight introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill number two oh eight.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, on Bill number two oh eight, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number two oh eight is finally passed.
Madam Vice Chair, we have no resolutions this evening. So we will move to unfinished business. Under unfinished business, item number one.
Please hold. If that will be the order, yeah.
Moving on to new business. We have one prepared order this evening. Prepared order number one is in the matter of contracting with Right Choice Managed Care, Inc., doing business as Anthem, Blue Cross and Blue Shield for medical and pharmacy stop-loss services.
Would someone like to move for the adoption of order?
I move for the adoption of order number one.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Order number one is adopted. Any other comments from the council? We would like to ent- would, we'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would, so Madam Chair?
There are second.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned, everyone.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, you got a vote.
Aye.
The staff says aye to.
Good job, everyone, on the letters.
Yes, we have a long drive home, some of us.
Thank you.
At eight, we'll see you at eight o'clock in the morning for the rest of the meeting.
And pray, pray that we have safe travels, everyone.
Everyone have a good evening. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.